Hello, I'd like to call the order, um, the January seventeenth, uh, twenty twenty-three meeting of the Marietta City Council. I'd like to ask the city clerk to please do roll call.
Councilmember Warren.
Here.
Councilmember Lavelle. Councilmember Holliday.
Here.
Mayor Protem Stone. Mayor DeForest.
Here.
Let the record reflect that all members are present with the exception of Councilmember Lavelle and Mayor Protem Stone.
Thank you so much. Um, moving on to public comment, closed session items only. Madam Clerk, are there any public comments on closed session items only?
Seeing none.
Um, I'd like to announce that we're going into closed session. Um, could you please go over the closed session agenda?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As listed on the agenda, the City Council will meet in closed session on three items. CS one, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation pursuant to government code sections five four nine five six point nine D two and D three because there is a significant exposure to litigation in one case. The City Council will also meet in CS two, conference with real property negotiators pursuant to government code section five four nine five six point eight to enable the City Council to consider negotiations and to give direction to its negotiators regarding that certain real property located at the northeast corner of Calmia Street and Memorial Way in the city of Marietta. APNs are listed on the agenda with the potential purchasers. The city's real property negotiators, the city manager, assistant city manager, development services director, economic development director, public works director, city engineer, and city attorney will seek direction from the City Council regarding the price and terms for this property. The City Council will also meet in closed session number three, conference with legal counsel pursuant to government code section five four nine five six point nine five B with the city manager, the city's risk manager, and the city attorney to consider the following workers' compensation claims, Danny Martin versus City of Newport Beach, claim number ADJ one four four seven seven four five one. That concludes the re- the items, Madam Mayor.
Thank you so much. Um, with that, we are going to recess into closed session and we'll reconvene our meeting at six P M. for our regular meeting. Thank you so much. Good evening, everyone. We are reconvening our January seventeenth meeting of the Marietta City Council coming in from our closed session, announcement of closed session actions. Madam City Attorney, could you please provide a report?
Yes, would the city clerk like to make an announcement on item one first?
Oh, thank you, Madam City Attorney. So I'd like to note for the record that Councilmember Lavelle has recused himself from closed session item number one due to a conflict as it was related to an item that was seen heard by the planning commission.
Thank you. The closed session report out is as follows. Item one was a conference with legal counsel regarding anticipated litigation pursuant to government code sections five four nine five six point nine D two and D three. The council was updated, no reportable action. Items two was to confer with the real property negotiator pursuant to government code section five four nine five six point eight. Again, the council was updated, no reportable action. On item three, the council conferred pursuant to government code section five four nine five six point nine five B regarding a worker's compensation claim, Danny Martin versus the city of Marietta. The council unanimously authorized settlement of this matter. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Madam City Attorney. Uh, Madam City Clerk, would you please call roll, roll call for determination of a quorum?
Councilmember Warren.
Here.
Councilmember Lavelle.
Here.
Councilmember Holliday.
Here.
Mayor Protem Stone.
Present.
Mayor DeForest.
Here.
Let the record reflect that all members are present. I would like to note for the record that Councilmember Stone was present during all closed session items, Madam Mayor, and Councilmember Lavelle was present during closed session two and three, Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on to the pledge of allegiance and invocation. Um, I would like to invite a Girl Scout USA troop five eight four and Boy Scout USA troop three eighty-four to the front to lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Would you please stand? Thank you so much. And can we put our right hand over our heart and ready begin?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much for being here tonight with us. You guys can sit down now. And I'd like to, uh, have everyone remain standing, I'm sorry, uh, for the invocation led by Chris. Didn't.
Go for it.
Okay.
Dec Natell.
Dec Natell, thank you so much, Chris.
Just watching you suffer, it's always good. If the, if the council would indulge me just for a minute, I think tonight's a, a special evening in which I think they have really three appropriate prayers. Um, one is yesterday remembering, uh, the Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Junior and, uh, his accomplishments, the, who the man that he was. And unfortunately, the, the gives us only a glimpse of the hatred that existed in those days, which I participated and was a part of growing up in the inner city in Baltimore. Um, I don't think the culture today even understands what racism is in comparison what I experienced. That we had two officers recently killed in the line of duty as well as, uh, three teens, uh, killed by, uh, the irresponsibility of drunk driving. And then, of course, the third prayer is for our council tonight and that it does well and, and has good, uh, process. And so that's the prayer I'd offer. It was the Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King that said that everyone has power for greatness, not for fame, but greatness, because greatness is determined by service. Darkness cannot drive out darkness, only light can do that. Hate cannot drive out hate, only love can do that. Our Lord taught us that praise be God, our Father, our Lord Jesus Christ, the Father of compassion and the God of all comfort, who comforts us in all our troubles so that we can comfort those in any trouble with the comfort we ourselves have received from God. Lord Godly Father, we ask you forgive us for our trespasses against you and the hatred of our world that holds for one another. Teach us to place love, compassion, and understanding upon one another as we live and serve in our community. Give hope to those right now who see only loss, hurt, and pain, and teach love to those who only see hate. Grant guidance to our council and the people who gather here tonight to treat one another with respect and seek to make wise decisions in hope of a better tomorrow. In the name of Jesus Christ, we pray. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, that moves us on to presentations. Um, our first presentation is Explore Marietta and an update on tourism. Madam City Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, we have Mr. Patrick Ellis here, President and CEO of the Marietta Woldemater, Woldemar Chamber of Commerce.
Good evening, uh, Mayor DeForest, councilmembers, um, staff and residents. My name is Patrick Ellis. I am President and CEO of the Marietta Woldemar Chamber of Commerce. I am also, uh, President and CEO of Explore Marietta, our destination marketing organization for the city of Marietta. Um, I'm here tonight to give you a recap of, uh, twenty twenty-two, um, the work that was done and some of what we have planned for twenty twenty-three. Uh, one thing that I would like to start off with, just, um, kind of a, uh, an opportunity to explain, uh, the idea of, uh, T O T and the resort fee, um, that pays, um, T O T is the transit occupancy tax, um, that every person who goes to any hotel in the country pays, uh, based on the T O T that's set out by that jurisdiction. Here in Marietta, um, we have a T O T of, uh, ten percent, uh, and then we have a resort fee on that, which is three percent. Um, we are in the lower echelons on both of those. If you consider, um, that if you go to Palm Springs, you're paying in the, uh, uh, much larger numbers when it comes to the T O T and the resort fees there. Um, this past year, um, the resort fee that was collected, uh, was right around the five-hundred-thousand-dollar number, um, to give you an idea. Um, if you can do math in your head, which I cannot, uh, but you could kind of figure out s- then what, uh, the T O T has collected to the city. The one great thing about T O T is that is general fund money that, that the city gets directly, does not have to split that with the county or with the state or with anybody. And that money then gets used to fix potholes, to help, uh, fund, uh, public safety, things of those sort, which is very important to our city. So that, that gives you an idea of how important it is for hotels in our city, the, the ones that we have and the ones that we will have coming in the future, um, which we'll talk a little bit about at the end here. But, um, just wanted to kind of just start that, um, just to kind of set the baseline so everyone kind of understands, um, what that is. So first off, I'm going to start with the recap of twenty twenty-two. Um, uh, I have, uh, quite a few slides here, but I'm not going to read any of this stuff. I'm going to point out a few different bullet points, uh, and then if you have any questions, you can let me know at the end. Uh, twenty twenty-two started off as, um, a challenging year still. Um, uh, beginning of twenty twenty-two, we still had some, uh, residual COVID effects, um, but then obviously then we can't got into some different concerns around inflation and such. Um, but, uh, Explore Marietta embarked on a new campaign, um, this past year, which was Relax, It's Marietta, um, to enhance the awareness around the city's peaceful offering, offerings and increased visitation during off-peak seasons. Um, we did see more than ten million impressions this past year. Our web traffic saw a seventy percent overall increase. Um, and our PR efforts led to, uh, a two hundred and thirty-three percent increase in total placements earned, uh, across different publications and such, and I'll highlight some of those in a little bit. So the creative overview, um, as I stated, we, we started a new campaign with the Relax, It's Marietta. Uh, it's an evergreen campaign, meaning it, it's a continuing one that we leverage throughout the year. Um, this leveraged a laid-back nature, um, of the region and as a place for relaxation and fun. And we all know how much I like fun. Uh, this will give you some of the, um, ideas on the digitals that were created, um, and used. Just to give you an idea, um, we leveraged some of our existing materials and then came up with this new campaign. Um, this gives you some of the more of the pay, the paid social ads, um, and you can see what those broke down to, um, the covered ads versus the tilt and pan kind of imaging things, um, all of which call on the, the consumer to act differently with them, um, once they're approached with them, whether on a computer or, as we know, it's usually on a tablet or a phone. Uh, next was our Craft Beer Week creative. This is a campaign that, um, the chamber had started, but Explore Marietta has really taken to a whole nother level. Um, this is a, uh, a, a campaign that has, that continues to grow, um, and is a great destination marketing campaign for Marietta. Um, it's one that pair, obviously pairs very well with, um, wine country, which is still the number one reason that, uh, visitors are coming to our entire valley. Um, so this gives you an idea of some of the collateral around that. Um, our paid media, uh, for twenty twenty-two, um, there's a lot of data around this, and I provided packets to each one of you. I wasn't going to throw up all that data on here because it would just look really boring. Um, and that's not what I'm about. Uh, there was a huge amount of awareness generated across all, um, tactics leading to more than ten million impressions. Uh, the evergreen campaign was the most impactful, yielding over fifty percent of both impressions and clicks, um, followed by the craft beer campaign, and then, uh, small meeting and holiday campaigns. Um, you can see in those packets, though, there's a ton of data in there. If you need more data, I've got tons of it. Uh, next up, we have our meetings and groups. This is something that we focused on a lot this year, um, that we had not done as much in the past, and we've got a lot of traction on this. Um, we had a few publication that reached out and I did some interviews for some of them, um, but started to see in the data, you'll see, uh, a lot more interest in this, and there's going to be some very neat and unique opportunities for us to expand on this in the future. So this gives you an idea of some of the creative assets and how they were placed. You saw the ads and the way they were, but this shows you kind of how they would show up on search engines, on, uh, some of the different, um, pages such as Yahoo and Google, um, just so you, you know what it looks like. Same thing here with the Craft Beer Week, uh, creative at, uh, assets. Then we get into our website. As far as our website, we had a, uh, an increase significantly between November of twenty twenty-one and October thirty-one of twenty twenty-two, um, when compared to the prior year. Um, paid media efforts accounted for seventy percent of all users and sessions coming to the website. Um, and then our top three landing pages were the homepage, the meet in Marietta page, and the blog relating to our holiday events, which was very interesting. Uh, newsletter, this is, um, that, there's data in here about the, the email newsletter. This is one of the smaller components of our marketing outreach, but it is still very important. Um, and you, you can see the information that's in there if you have questions about that. Uh, social media on an overall basis, there, so there was an impressive increase on all social media act metrics, uh, for content created during this campaign, um, for Explore Marietta, and it was all above average. Um, you will see the numbers there, audience growth of, um, over five thousand followers, which is a fifty-six percent increase, engagements over ninety-three thousand, which is a ninety-four percent increase, impressions, um, four million seven hundred and eighty-four thousand, uh, and post-link clicks was over thirty-one thousand, which is a hundred and sixty-three percent increase. Um, you'll see at the bottom there are top cities that we perform in, um, the one that is very interesting to us and what we have started to focus a little bit more on, and we see this on a regional basis, not just us specifically, is the Phoenix area. We were seeing a lot of traffic coming from the Phoenix area for travel. Apparently, we are much cooler than Phoenix. Uh, our California travel stories, um, we have partnered with Visit California for the last couple of years, but had some really good, um, overall stories that were picked up by Visit California. You can see some of the impressions here, um, but this is something that we will continue to work on and focus on. Um, Visit California really loves the, the story aspect of our area and our region, and so we will continue to put a lot of focus on that. You'll see, uh, some of the statistics that are there. So some of our top performing posts of the year, um, and they're in the four different categories here. The first one there you see is our Facebook. Um, our top one, um, this past year was, had impressions of over a hundred and thirteen thousand. Um, the second one on the, on the bottom left there is Twitter. That is a very minimal one because, uh, destination organizations do not have good luck in marketing in Twitter. Um, the great thing is it doesn't cost us anything because it's an automatic, uh, feed straight over. Uh, top right is Instagram, which obviously is a much larger play for us. Our largest, um, impression was, uh, just over seventeen thousand impressions. Um, the very fun one is, is we just finally got into TikTok, uh, one of my favorites, uh, this past year. Um, and lo and behold, one of our TikToks got over one point five million views. Um, it shocked all of us, to say the least, um, but we were very, very happy with that. As far as public relations goes, um, public relations allows us to reach consumers through third-party credible sources where they're consuming information to make their buying decisions. This is where we get posted in different websites and such. So the following slides are going to show you some of these publication, publications. Market Watch, uh, I know everyone subscribes to Market Watch, um, but the funny thing is, is they get over seventy million, uh, reaches on a regular basis. Um, we got published in, on their site. Mom's Blog Society, um, gets thirty-five, over thirty-five thousand unique visitors every single month, um, got listed in there. Um, those are the ones that we really want because, uh, right now it's still, uh, the predominant decision-makers on any travel in any household is the female head of the house. Next up is, uh, One News Page has, uh, over fifty-one thousand, uh, unique visitors every single month. We got the Craft Beer Week in there. So twenty twenty-three, travel trends, what's next? So one of the things is, is the, the trends that are, that have started at the end of the year and now are carrying into. So some of those are, as you can see, is the off-the-grid vacations, off-the-beaten-path destinations, family and multi-generational travel, and nostalgic getaways, kind of speaks to our region, um, just a little bit. And then also embracing the great outdoors, uh, we're seeing an increase in millennial spending now, um, uh, which actually plays well with our region for a lot of different reasons. Sustainable travel, um, is very important with a lot of travelers now, and wellness retreats. So how does that play into our planning and strategy? Well, the fun one I will start with is the, uh, wellness and retreats. Um, as most of you know, um, we do have a new owner-operator of the Marietta Hot Springs, um, and that is currently under construction. That will play a huge part into our strategy, uh, in the latter half of this year as they get closer to their opening of the doors to the public. Um, we are, uh, in discussions right now of putting our marketing team and their marketing team together to see how we can make sure to blow up the messaging on both sides and make sure that we take full advantage of this. Um, but some of our key areas of focus for twenty twenty-three is, uh, building relationships with the, um, local businesses, um, by creating a Band Wango Pass, which is, uh, an opportunity for travelers to come in, visit different businesses, get points, um, kind of like your reward system, and then you can get Explore Marietta schwag, just because I want to say that. Uh, promote nearby winery tours and local accommodations. As I said, it is still the number one reason that people come to this region. Uh, year-round outdoor recreation opportunities for nature lovers. Um, obviously, that speaks to Marietta when it comes to the hiking, the biking, um, and everything that we do. We do have a very good working relationship too, and we are about to really help to blow up the Tour de Marietta this year as well. Um, so excited about working with Ernie and them about that. Um, increasing visibility for Craft Beer Week, uh, we think this is a huge asset for our region. Um, and then our unique holiday experiences and activities. This is something that we, we included this past year and saw a lot of interest in, in all of the different aspects that we put on there. And so we were very excited with that and will continue to focus on that and see what we can do to, to promote that, uh, even more. And with that, that is my time. If you have any questions, I am available to answer those for you or deflect them to whoever I can.
Thank you so much, Mr. Ellis. Nice to see the positive growth of Explore Marietta. That's really exciting. Um, any of my colleagues have any questions? Nothing. I see nothing. So Patrick, you did a great job. Thank you so much for being here today. All right, we're moving on to the approval of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda?
Seeing none.
Uh, I have a call for a motion and a second to approve the agenda. All right, I see you have a motion and a second.
Motion carries unanimously, five zero.
Thank you. Uh, department commissions, um, and department announcements. Let's start off with our city manager. Administrative update, anything?
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight's update will be given to you by Assistant City Manager Crane.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and members of the City Council. Um, I have the update to tell you that there is going to be a community cleanup and shred event next Saturday on January twenty-eighth from eight A M. to twelve P M. here at City Hall that we want the community to be aware of. This event is hosted by Waste Management, and it's open to Marietta residents, and they're invited to take advantage of the opportunity to discard of items such as, uh, large electronic equipment, uh, and appliances, washers and dryers, refrigerators, small electronics as well, uh, big bulky items like tables, mattresses, box springs, barbecues, patio furniture, and also bagged green waste. And then in addition, residents can also bring shred papers that they would like to shred, uh, to this event. Um, there is not a household hazardous waste event as part of this particular one, so we will not be collecting things like paint, tires, oil, light bulbs, motor oil. We have another time during the year when those items are collected. We do have more specific information on the city's homepage at mariettaca.gov, and we hope that residents will take advantage of this opportunity as they're kicking off the new year and cleaning out their garage and their homes. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Crane, our Assistant City Manager. Any questions for her from the council? Fantastic. Okay, moving on to governing body commissions, committee reports. Um, I'll, Madam City Clerk.
At this time, we will hear governing body reports. This is the opportunity for City Council members to provide a brief report on conferences, seminars, and commission committees or board meeting attendance. Report shall not exceed three minutes. The city clerk will use a timer. We will start with Councilmember Warren and move on to Councilmember Lavelle, Holliday, Stone, and DeForest.
Thank you. Um, I'll start off, um, with, um, the third, the sixth, and the tenth of January, conducting interviews with Marietta citizens applying to serve on the city of Marietta Commission boards and committees. On the eleventh of January, I attended the Riverside County Transportation Commission, and I found out that Assembly Bill nine, I'm sorry, two nine four nine provides free tolls to qualified disabled veterans as of January first, twenty twenty-three. This resolution expands the discount from the ninety-one express lanes at can holders to all disabled veterans with fast-track accounts and to all times of the day on the ninety-one express lanes only. They're up on the list. It will tell you that the phone number you can call if you have any questions or the website. Please, if you know a disabled veteran and they do have qualified plates, let them know that the ninety-one freeway, they can ride in the, in the toll lanes at no charge. Also, on eleven eleven, I was busy that day. I attended the Riverside County Transportation Commission meeting on behalf of, again, Mayor DeForest on the Interstate fifteen. Um, the update on the Interstate fifteen express lanes, projected southern extension from Calhalko Road to the S R seventy-four. Committee directed staff to run additional cost analysis for presentation at the next meeting and for the direction for moving forward for the project delivered by twenty twenty-eight. Sorry, I was hoping to be sooner than that, but it wasn't. My name and phone number are on the last page. If you need me, please call, email me at any time. That concludes my reports at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Warren. Councilmember Lavelle.
I have no updates at this time.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Holliday.
And I likewise have no updates at this time.
And Mayor Protem Stone.
I have nothing to report at this time.
And myself, um, I have nothing to report as well, but I'd like to thank, uh, my councilmember, um, Warren for attending my R C T C meeting. Thank you so much. All right, moving, moving on to, uh, public con- comments, uh, non-agendized items. Madam City Clerk.
Now is the time for public comment on non-agenda items. Any person may address the governing bodies on any subject matter pertaining to city business. Normally, no action may be considered or taken by the governing bodies on any matter not listed on the agenda. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes. Dr. Kenneth Robinson.
Thank you. Uh, good evening, uh, the Honorable City Council and, uh, Honorable Mayor. I'm just here representing, uh, Dr. Washington from the Island Empire Men's Club, and we just want to thank you for the appreciation of showing up at the MLK Breakfast on Saturday. That's all I have.
Thank you so much. It was my pleasure. Thank you, sir.
Gillian Larson.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Council Members, City Staff, and Marietta. So you may know, I am the creator and founder of Reality Rally, which was a three, it is a three-day event. We raise money for Michelle's Place. And over the last twelve years, although COVID shut us for two, we have raised over half a million dollars for Michelle's Place, which is a cancer resource center in town. Now, part of that whole event was to see a collaboration between all the city, um, all the cities in the valley, and we did end up having eight cities vie against each other every year at Reality Rally to win the cup, showing that they were the best city in the valley. Now, Marietta and Temecula, they were the first, and Temecula beat Marietta by a little bit, I think it was three minutes. They came to the City Council to thank City Council for playing against them. Your team walked in wearing Marietta hats, and as they walked in to come up to thank them, Temecula reached down and put on Temecula hats. So it was a lot of fun, and I could tell that the tagline, Fun for Funds, was going to be just huge, and it has been. We have done it basically for ten years because of COVID shutting us down for two, but I'm also here to say thank you so much for all the years that you did participate. You came, you played, you had fun, and you vied against seven of the, well, you were six of the other cities to win the big cup, the Floating Gnome Trophy, because that was our little mascot. What I'm also here today to tell you is that we will not be having Reality Rally this year. My husband has retired. It takes It takes me about eight months to pull the whole thing together every year despite the fact that there are over 400 people that help, but I don't have the time to do that and take a four-month trip with my husband this year. We were to take a four-month trip in 2020 for our 50th wedding anniversary. Yes, please tell this poor man he's very brave, but we couldn't because COVID had other ideas. So this year, we're going to do it, and I will be gone for four months plus a few other trips here and there because he's now retired, and so I need to retire for one year. We will regroup in October. When we come back from our trip, we're going to South Africa, East Africa, and possibly anywhere else. We'll regroup and come up with some thoughts and ideas, and we'd love to have Marietta part of this again. So thank you for your years of support. Thank you, Marietta. Many of you have been part of what we do, and so I really value that, as does Michelle's Place. So thank you very much for the time that you put in, and I want to see you again in 2024. So thank you very much.
Thank you so very much. Thanks for everything you do. Enjoy your vacation.
Connie McConnell.
I think you could all hear my knees crack when I got up. Good evening, Council, Mayor DeForest. I usually just do an update. One of the things I forgot to talk to about last time and I got scolded for was that we did have our, we were going to have at that point the mural reveal, which is on the side of Ray's Cafe downtown. We had that. Mayor DeForest was there, some of the rest of you. We appreciate everybody who came out. Everybody seems real happy that we've accomplished our first mural in downtown. I want to announce that finally, thank you, Ivan Holler, and thank you, Bob Maling. We are going to have Juniper Street closed down for our market on Thursday night. We will be holding our market. We missed last time due to rain, but this time we're going to go ahead. It should be pretty good, just a little chilly. And so we have some new food vendors. It'll be, it'll be a nice change, but it might at first be a little bit confusing to some people because we will have the Juniper Street closed, but this is going to be such a big safety feature because, as a lot of you know who have walked downtown, you just go kind of, you're walking up and down with the vendors, and you go through the intersection, and you don't even realize that there's cars coming through there. So taking care of that, and that'll be very good. Let's see, what else do I need to update you on that's going on downtown? Anyway, we thank you very much for all of your help with doing that because that was a big thing to accomplish. I want to throw out, how do you guys feel about Christmas decorations? We feel with the merchants group downtown, we think that by next year, we should have Christmas decorations. So I'm putting that out there for you now. Every other city around us has them. Paris has them, Lake Elsinore has them, Temecula has them, Menifee has them, and we really would love to see Christmas decorations in downtown Marietta by next year. So you might be hearing this again from us, and we're just putting it out there. We hope that the council and the citizens of Marietta will consider this and kind of get behind it and see what we can do because it's a beautiful downtown. It's a great place to be, and we feel it needs to be decorated. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your comments.
Julie Paul.
Good evening, Mayor DeForest and Council. I'm Julie Polly, and I am a volunteer with Troop 384 in the Takwitz Scouting District. I'm a Mayor Badge Counselor, and I brought some scouts with me tonight. And these scouts are working on earning their citizenship in community Mayor Badge, and it is a dive, a deep dive into local government and nonprofits that serve your community, and they have to do some, like, eight hours of volunteerism just for this badge and visit a city council. And they met with Mayor Protem Stone and asked her lots of questions about how they can make their community better. So I just wanted to introduce ourselves, and if you would allow them to come up and introduce themselves, use my time for that if you would oblige. Thank you.
Hey, hello, I'm Logan, and I'm from Troop 384, and I'm in the Midnight Hikers Patrol. And I just want to say it's really cool to be here and, you know, like, see all these people.
Hi, my name is Lincoln Beck, and I'm a First Class Boy Scout from Troop 384. Thank you for having me here.
My name is Jacob Piccadella. I'm a scout in Troop 384. My rank is also scout because that's how the rank structure goes, and thank you for having me here also.
Hi, my name is Luke Beck. I'm a Midnight Hiker, and I'm a First Class Scout in Troop 384. Thank you for having me here.
Hello, my name is Jacob, and I'm from Troop 384. I just joined, so I don't have a rank. Thank you for having me.
My name is Brody, and I'm from Troop 384. I don't have a rank because I have just joined.
My name is Robert, and I am in Troop 384, and I'm in the Midnight Hikers.
Hi, my name is Luke Piccadella. I'm from Troop 384. I currently hold the rank of Life Scout, and it's nice meeting you all.
Hello, my name is CJ Britann, currently a Life Scout in the Fearsome Phoenix Patrol with 384. Thank you for having me.
Your time is up, but there's a few left, and I'm not going to leave you out. So hustle a little bit faster, guys, and keep on going.
Hello, my name is Iliana Viasenor. I am almost complete with my Tenderfoot rank, and thank you guys for having us.
Hi, my name is Blake, and I'm a scout in Troop 384.
I'm Riley Brooks from Troop 584, and I am a First Class Scout. Thank you for having me.
Hi, my name is Michael Kalustyan, and I am currently First Class Scout, and thank you for having me here.
Hi, my name is Courtney Voight. I'm a Star Scout in Troop 584. Thank you for having me.
Hello, my name is Athena Bailey, and I'm from Troop 584. Thank you for having me.
Hello, my name is Conner Ten, and I'm a Second Class Scout from Troop 384. Thank you for having me.
Howdy, my name is Hunter Brooks. I am a Life Scout and from 384. Thank you for having me.
Hello, my name is Jeremiah Britann. I am a Star Scout from 384. Thank you for having me.
Hi, my name is Damian Claudio, and I'm a Second Class Scout from Troop 384. Thank you for having me.
Hi, my name is Luca Murdis. I'm a Star Scout in Troop 384. Thank you for having me.
Hi, I'm Herges Morantos from Troop 384. I'm a First Class Scout, and thank you for having me.
Hi, I'm Austin Wing. I'm a First Class Scout from 384. Thank you for having me.
Hi, I'm Charlie Anderson. I'm a Star Scout from Troop 384. Thank you for having me.
Hello, I'm Leah Mariah, and I'm from Troop 384, and I'm currently working on Scout Rank Tenderfoot.
Hi, my name is Jacob Campos. I'm from Troop 384. I'm currently a Star Scout. Thank you for your time.
Thank you all for being here. Who knows, there may be a fellow future councilman or woman out there. So thank you all for being here.
Madam Mayor, that concludes non-agenda public comments.
We ended with a bang. That was wonderful. So moving on to the consent calendar, items 1 through 10. Items on the consent calendar are considered routine and may be enacted as, by one motion and vote. There will be no discussion of these items unless specific items are removed from the consent calendar for a separate motion. Are there any requests from the City Council to pull any consent calendar items for discussion or abstaining from a vote? Madam City Clerk.
I'm seeing none, and there are no public comments for consent calendar.
All right, then I would like to move that we have a motion and a second to approve the consent calendar. We have a motion and a second. And everyone vote. Fantastic.
Motion carries unanimously, five zero.
Fantastic. Moving on to discussion. City Council Subcommittee and City Affiliated Agencies Committees, Boards, Appointments. Staff member, you have the staff report.
Yes, Madam Mayor. I'm going to do it from here, if that's okay. It's going to be a little interactive.
Yes, thank you.
So thank you for that. So this item before you is the yearly review and appointments to City Council Subcommittee and the City Affiliated Agencies. So in January of 2022, the City Council dissolved, reaffirmed, amended, and added to the existing subcommittees. Those actions actually led to a more structured and consolidated list, which we are dealing with today. The agenda report provided in your packet provides each committee's boards' purpose and current membership. When we get to appointing members, it will be interactive, as I mentioned, and as you express interest, my team will be memorializing it, and we will confirm prior to requesting a vote. So City Council Policy 100-20, it actually was provided in the agenda report for everybody to reference. All council members should be familiar with this policy or get familiar with it. And I just highlighted some things there for you that I think are relevant to tonight, and it's identifying responsibilities that includes representatives' report on activities, and you would do that during the governing body reports on the agenda as we did earlier. So displayed before you is just a brief difference between an ad hoc versus a standing committee. As you know, both ad hoc and standing committees are a subsidiary body of the legislative body. So the differences there really is the ad hoc, it's really, it serves a limited, single purpose. It's not a continuing subject matter. It dissolves when that task is complete. There's no fixed meeting schedule, and there's, it's not subject to the Brown Act. Looking at the standing committee, it does have an ongoing, a continuing subject matter jurisdiction, and it does have a fixed meeting schedule, and that is subject to the Brown Act. And if there are any questions on that, the City Attorney is available to answer any questions. So I'm going to take this in a couple parts. So prior to assignments, there has been a request to establish a mental health advisory Subcommittee, which was requested by Councilmember Lavelle and Mayor Protem Stone. I will turn it over to Councilmember Lavelle in a moment, but before that, I want to provide a brief background of this council. In April of 2022, the City Council created a homelessness services ad hoc Subcommittee to formally structure the Riverside Homeless Alliance and advocate on behalf of Marietta for a new behavioral health campus in Southwest Riverside County. Subcommittee members were Councilmember Stone and former Mayor Ingram. In August of 2022, Councilmember Stone and former Mayor Ingram requested the creation of a city mental health ad hoc Subcommittee that would focus on the impacts of the mental health crisis being faced by the nation. If desired, the City Council could have exercised its discretion by including the mental health as a component of the homeless services ad hoc committee. However, after discussion, no action was taken. After the seating of the new City Council, Councilmember Lavelle, with the support of Mayor Protem Stone, is requesting the establishment of a mental health advisory standing committee. This slide provides purpose and membership composition, which Mr. Lavelle can speak to. If this is established, the Subcommittee serves a purpose of a continuing subject matter, it will be deemed standing, and if approved, I will meet with the members and return to the City Council with final composition and the fixed meeting schedule. Before we move on, the City Council should decide on this specific recommendation. So with that, I will request that Councilmember Lavelle provide additional information, followed by council questions, public comment, discussion, and then a vote. Do we have any questions, Madam Mayor, before Mr. Lavelle speaks?
I see no questions. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Lavelle.
If it's okay, I'd like to have Councilwoman Stone go first on this item.
Absolutely.
Thank you. I'd like to call Rochelle Harris to the podium, please. Thank you, Ms. Harris.
Of course.
Is it true that you work as a therapist that works predominantly with youth and their families?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
And is it true that you have often have to refer children and their parents outside of Southwest Riverside County region for inpatient beds residential treatment services?
Yes, ma'am, that's also correct.
On average, how far are these treatment options from Marietta?
On average, it can be anywhere from 50 to 100 miles.
And would you say that this is a major emotional impact on families and children?
Yes, I do believe so.
Thank you, Ms. Harris.
Of course.
Dr. Kevin Flagg, MD, Loma Linda University Healthcare Marietta Emergency Room Director, was unable to attend this evening, but he did send me an email, and I'd like to read it to you. As a local healthcare providers and hospital administrators, we believe that the residents of Marietta deserve better mental healthcare treatment to be left in the emergency room hallway for days due to the lack of services here in Southwest Riverside County. Between multiple agencies, hospitals, mental healthcare providers, city leaders, altogether we create compassionate and creative solutions for this issue. With minimal cost or impact to the city of Marietta through the use of thoughtful volunteers, commission dedicated to finding solutions to this issue is paramount to the well-being for all Marietta residents. The lack of mental healthcare resources in Southwest Riverside County has now become a public health and safety crisis that cannot be ignored. Private hospitals can no longer shoulder the task of managing this public health tragically alone. While we aim to be a part of the solution, we cannot be all of it. You have our complete and total support in the creation of this commission. Creativity, innovation are where solutions are found, even in the most difficult of tasks at hand. Tonight, I also received an email from Alistair Machoka, and he is the Chief Operator Officer of Rancho Springs Medical Center. His email is very lengthy, and I'm just going to read a little part of it. I am hopeful that this action group will increase awareness of the magnitude of the challenges. More importantly, it will mark the beginning of a concerted and coordinated effort between the public and private partners to address it. The bottom line is that we not have, we do not have enough resources in the community for behavior health patients because the emergency rooms have become the de facto catch for all patients that are experiencing mental health crisis and is quite draining on the limited resources we have. On any given day, our emergency room, Inland Valley Rancho Springs, have anywhere from five to 10 patients that are purely there for mental health treatment. Often, these patients stay in our ER for at least a day, sometimes longer, and barely have other medical complications. Just recently, we had a mental health patient stay in our emergency room for over 10 days. The lack of mental health resources, particularly in the Southwest County, are quite glaring. Private hospitals are not equipped to handle the current crisis on their own. You have our support on this important initiative that will create a commission of creative and passionate volunteers to address this very important issue. I received a report with regards to a community partner, AMR. When AMR is called to assist with a mental behavior patient, they are required to ask a plethora of questions. For example, do you have high blood pressure? If the patient says no, and after evaluating the patient, if their blood pressure- If the patient says no, and after evaluating the patient, if their blood pressure is elevated, they must transport the patient to the closest hospital instead of ETS, Emergency Treatment Services in Riverside. And this is one of the major reasons why our emergency rooms are overcrowded. Next, I'd like to call Scott Agagianian to the podium.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening, Mr. Agagianian. You know, we've had many discussions about homeless, mental health behavior, and economic development. I was wondering if you could just please communicate with my fellow colleagues how important economic development is to this crisis that we are experiencing with mental health.
Well, it's a specifically important industry, but it is an industry. And as we see with the Marietta Innovation Center, when there are fields that aren't growing here organically, sometimes we can help spur them on by taking certain types of action.
Thank you very much. Thank you. I'd like to call Ashley Hutchinson to the podium, please.
Good evening.
Thank you, Mrs. Hutchinson. I really want to thank you so much for being part of these two meetings in our community to address this major crisis, not only nationally, but here in Marietta. The last meeting, Bill Brenneman, who's the Deputy Director of Mental Health Services from the County of Riverside, stated that Loma Linda Campus offers whole-spectrum services. And at that time, you corrected him that Loma Linda Campus does not offer whole-spectrum services. In layman terms, can you explain to my fellow colleagues what Loma Linda Marietta Campus does offer versus the main Loma Linda Hospital?
Absolutely. I'm an alumni, I'm a graduate of Loma Linda University, that's where I earned my graduate education. I'm also a former employee before I decided to go to the outpatient and private sector part of mental health care. I worked at the Marietta Campus for almost five years, and the Marietta Behavioral Medicine Center offers a very niche, specific form of mental health treatment called PHP and IOP treatment. PHP and IOP treatment stand for Partial Hospital and Intensive Outpatient. They also offer a certain amount of individual one-on-one therapy, but other than that, that's it. The Redlands Campus is full spectrum, where they have inpatient detox, PHP, IOP, the Behavioral Health Institute that offers one-on-one psychiatric and individual therapy. So I, that is correct, I did correct Mr. Brenneman on that topic. And that is no slight to Mr. Brenneman, but I do think it kind of leads to what I'm seeing as a mental health care provider here in the region, and that's, that Marietta's needs often get ignored, and he didn't fully comprehend what the Marietta Campus had to offer, so I did politely correct him, that is correct.
Great. And you are a psychotherapist, correct?
Yes.
Which services or resources are a top priority that we need in the southwest region?
I would love to see additional therapists and psychiatrists recruited to the region. I think that that is probably gonna be part of the answer, especially given what Mr. Agagianian said about economic development, and because Marietta is the medical corridor of the region, psych hasn't been necessarily part of that conversation. You know, I know it's not as attractive as being in the emergency room, or being a pediatrician, or being a family medicine doctor, and we need those too, we're short on those, but I can tell you that, and I said this back in August when I spoke, many of my patients tell me that they're waiting anywhere from three to nine months to get in with me, and there's only so many of me, right? As a clinician, there's only so many patients I can see in a week. So the first part of this is recruitment. The next piece, for me, in my eyes, is getting together a standing commission that can create something here in Marietta that can hopefully be replicated across Southwest Riverside. And my hope is to eventually see maybe a mental health urgent care created where private companies like Telecare have one in Paris that is really beneficial and great. But again, Paris is a hike for some of our folks who maybe have to take a bus to get there, or have to drive into San Diego, Orange, other parts of Riverside, up into San Bernardino, Los Angeles. I've sent people to Santa Barbara for a treatment. Anybody know how many miles Santa Barbara is from Marietta? That's not okay.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Hutchinson. Oh, yes, sir. Please, yes.
Just, you had mentioned the, the two campuses, right? So we have Loma Linda, main campus up in the city of Loma Linda, and we have our Marietta Hospital, and then we have the BMC. Can you briefly kind of walk us through the physical layout of what our BMC, where our BMC is, and what the hospital, the acute side, actually looks like, and how far those two are, and they're not really touching each other, I guess?
Sure. So when you talk about hospital systems and multiple campuses, there's often a disconnect, right? So Redlands is what, 35, 40-ish, 50-ish miles, maybe on the farthest end, right on the Highland Inn away from us here in Marietta? And up there, they offer the full-spectrum care that Mr. Brenneman had assumed we had here in Marietta. Here in Marietta, we are exclusively outpatient, and we're in the professional office building. So if you're driving down the 215, you see two buildings, right? You see the hospital, you see a bridge that connects to that professional office building. The professional office building is where the BMC is here in Marietta. And it is such a gem of a resource, it's a really amazing program. But unfortunately, as both Dr. Flagg and Alistair had said, the private hospitals cannot be left to be the solution for this crisis. And in my research on kind of some of the work that other regions of the United States are using, a framework that they're using is this partnership where there's public buy-in, there's private buy-in, you've got peers, you've got stakeholders, you have multiple pieces to this. So I do think it's unfortunate that Loma Linda, Rancho Springs, Inland Valley have been forced to be the solution to something that they will never be the full and total solution to. And because of the way mental health care works in the United States, specifically here in California, the government is one of the largest, if not the largest, provider of mental health treatment services and social services. So I think it's beneficial to Marietta's residents, given how many military families we have here, young families that live here, law enforcement families, these are families that I take particular passion to because this is my treatment background. And Marietta is full of those folks who have very specific social and emotional needs that aren't being met.
Thank you, that's all I had for.
Also, I have one more. Mr. Brenneman also had alluded that the county was going to invest $70 million into mobile units that will assist our emergency room physicians and staff. And in your opinion, would that work?
I think that it would. My fear is, is that Marietta gets left out of the equation. I think for lack of better, better words, the county doesn't see us as having problems. They see us as this upper-middle-class suburb where, you know, if I, if I bury my head in the sand, I can't really have to deal with, with what's happening in Marietta and Temecula, which is not unique to Marietta and Temecula, right? The number one and number two ways that Generation Z, which is the kids that we're raising right now into early adulthood are dying, number one, overdose. Number two, suicide. And because of that, my fear is, is that our kids, our families, our, our residents get left out of the equation because we don't have homeless encampments like Riverside does, the size that they do, or we don't have the same psychosocial or economic issues that maybe Paris or Hemet might, which is really unfortunate. And the, the mindset is, is frustrating because as somebody who provides healthcare here, and has for years here in Marietta, I can tell you, we have lots of people hurting and suffering right now.
Thank you so much. In our last meeting, Mr. Brenneman had suggested that the city of Marietta was going to get a second therapist for our C-Bat unit. And I actually had to correct him, we're not getting a second one. The one that we had left Marietta for another job, in that they were going to be replacing the one that we have. But I also did tell him that, we'll take that second one, because I know that our chief of police would love to have a second therapist. And come to find out that the therapists that are on board with our C-Bat, and I, I just want to share one thing with you. With regards to the defending the police across the nation, because they wanted to make sure that therapists were first to call in an incident like this, I have to commend our previous chief of police, our current chief of police, that realized how benefit, how beneficial is to have a therapist. For the last decade, we've had a therapist part of our C-Bat unit, and that shows you how innovative and forward-thinking our public safety chiefs have been. But sadly, the therapist does not work on the weekends. And so the majority of the calls do come on the weekends, and so these are on the shoulders of our officers. And, and then sometimes, depending on the mental behavior patient, it takes two officers to transport the mental behavior patient to ETS in Riverside. So I wanted to show you the disconnect that we have with the County of Riverside, with the resources that we need to plug in. So in closing, this is not an attack on the County of Riverside. This is about our community partners coming together to identify the lack of resources and services. Let's close the gap by having our community partners, and not limited to the unified school districts, public safety, therapists, psychologists, psychiatrists, our hospitals, our veterans administration, nonprofits, for-profit entities, AMR, and elected officials from across the region. Let's communicate. Lastly, Councilwoman Lovell would like to share with everyone how we can do this, how we can implement this with limited city and city staff time, how we can facilitate this under the umbrella of our homeless task force, which is the oversight from Brian Ambrose, and he actually is brilliant. So with that said, I'm gonna pass it off to Councilwoman Lovell.
Thank you, Councilwoman Stone. This topic has been top of mind for most of my adult life. In my professional life, I've been involved in mental health in many different capacities over the years. My undergraduate and graduate degrees started me in a career with Riverside County Department of Public Social Services in the Child Protective Services Division. For the past 15 years, I've been working in healthcare administration, which is closely tied to these serious mental health issues that Councilwoman Stone previously addressed. The need for, the need for improvement and access has only skyrocketed with the growing population and the serious need throughout the nation, and right here in our very own community. I'd like to show you an example of what our city could look like, and the benefit it would provide to those needing mental health services, and most importantly, how we can move the dial to expand and augment the services to the Southwest Riverside Counties, spearheaded by, and spearheaded by this engaged and caring city council and the stakeholders. This video clip that I'd like to share with you all is from Overland Park, Kansas, and what they did, I believe it was two years ago. So, Miss City Clerk, we could play that?
And today, we'll hear how a group in Overland Park wants to help people in a mental health crisis. The special task force will present its recommendations to the city council tonight.
And 41 Action News reporter Charlie Keegan joins us with a preview of what we're going to hear this evening. Charlie, this is obviously a pretty sensitive subject. What are they expecting to talk about tonight?
Well, there'll be nine recommendations going before the city council during their meeting here at City Hall behind me. And some of these recommendations can be put into action rather quickly, others, though, will require some collaboration on a regional level, but all these recommendations really have the ultimate goal of saving lives.
The 2018 police shooting of John Albers, a 17-year-old in crisis, put the spotlight on mental health treatment in Overland Park.
I wanted to make sure that out of tragedy, we had positive things that are happening so that I could try to avoid from that ever happening again.
City Councilman Chris Nuland has led Overland Park's mental health task force since it formed last year. He believes the group's nine recommendations can save lives.
What we have today is, is really great recommendations that will boost this city up and, and bring mental health forward.
The recommendations call for adding more full-time crisis intervention officers and mental health coresponders to the police department to offer 24/7 coverage.
We're not to a point where we can guarantee that we're gonna be able to dispatch a CIT officer. That is ultimately a goal, to be able to?
Sergeant Tom Carey with the police department's Behavioral Health Unit says another recommendation calls for more mental health support for first responders.
To be able to do our best for our citizens, we've got to be at our best ourselves.
On a regional level, the task force wants to create a crisis senate where officers can take involuntary patients for treatment instead of just taking them to the ER, support substance abuse prevention and intervention, and improve court diversion programs.
We need to make sure that we are getting the right resources to the community quickly.
A new page on the city's website that lists available resources is another recommendation, as well as adding victim advocates, creating a new committee to track progress, and promoting a trauma-informed approach.
We can't always move at the speed of light, which is what I know we all want to do.
Nuland hopes these recommendations lead to more success stories, like the officer in this footage from a traffic camera stopping a woman from jumping off a bridge after her family called 911 for help.
So let's talk the next steps here. Today, the task force will make its recommendations, hand those recommendations over to the city council, then the city manager will kind of assign each recommendation to different city staff, who will work on implementing those recommendations and paying for them if there's any kind of costs associated with the recommendation. Lindsay and Taylor?
Charlie, do they have a way of tracking how often they describe someone as being in crisis right now?
So they do, yeah. The police department actually keeps track of how many times it gets a 911 call for someone in crisis, and it says, over the last three years, which is about 1,095 days, they've had 10,000 calls for someone in a mental health crisis, almost one every day for the last three years. Taylor?
Wow. All right, Charlie Keegan reporting live for us this morning. Charlie, thank you very much.
Thank you, Miss City Clerk. And if I could ask for that link for the Overland Park website to be pulled up? So this is the landing page for the City-Ran website, and I, when I found this, I essentially thought this was the lowest hanging fruit in this discussion from what this committee could do. This is, we're gonna dive into the actual Mental Health Advisory Committee link at the very bottom, so this is kind of the, the height, it'll go up, right, in the middle, right there. There you go. So this'll take you to the actual committee and how it, how it's structured, I don't think you clicked it. Thank you. So right here, this is essentially the, the outline of what this could look like for us here, you know, with, with changes that would be appropriate for our city. But you've got the, kind of the, the, the standards and what they're looking to achieve here, right here in these six bullet points. Over to the right, you've got when the, the meetings are happening, you've got the called-out staff liaison here. Here is actually their police chief, Frank Donches. And then below, you've got the committee, the committee members called out, and kind of their titles. So you've got, you know, community advocate, you've got a lawyer, you've got a CID counselor, got a licensed clinical social worker, and the, the good, the good thing here is you're actually obviously partnering with the county as part of this effort here, and so this is, be a great place for, again, a collaborative task force to kind of oversee this and what gets brought forward, and again, to the recommendations they provided in that video clip. So in closing, I just want our city to be a leader and a shining example to the rest of the nation, just like Overland Park, by taking initiatives and bringing forward ideas such as this. There's no reason, from my perspective, to recreate the wheel when something like this is already done. To me, this looks pretty straightforward, and it's a, it's a nice shot at just directing people for appropriate care and identifying gaps where care is not available. I'm a quote guy, so I stole this from one of my friend's Facebook pages. It's a couple quotes from Mr. Bean, if you guys aren't old enough to know who Mr. Bean is. Just bear with me for a second. I, I saw this two nights ago when I was reading over some of the material, and I thought it was very appropriate for tonight in this discussion. "If you really want to help someone, you'll always create a way. Solutions don't have to be constrained by resources, and number three, just do it, don't overthink it." With that, I'd like to bring it up for discussion.
Sorry about that. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mayor Protem Stone and Lovell, and now we're gonna move to take council members' questions. So if I would like to...
So, if I would like to start maybe with Mr. Holiday? Would you like to start us all?
Certainly, absolutely.
Thank you so much, sir. Appreciate that.
I do have a few questions. I don't think anyone debates that mental health is a major issue that's not being addressed properly in our entire region. The question is, is what's the most efficient way to go about that? I'm not a fan of creating laws or committees without specific goals. I see the state do that all the time. They create a law, don't state a goal, and it ends up being ineffective and doesn't accomplish what it was originally intended to do. So, I would love to see whether it's a committee, a task force, or a commission, whatever is being talked about here, that has specific goals and benchmarks that we're looking to My question, actually, if Chief Conrad could come down, I have a couple of questions for the chief.
Yes, sir.
Do you have, I'm not looking for specific statistics, but do you have an idea of how many mental health issues are related to your calls for service?
Our CBAT team handles about 500 a year. That's just CBAT. So, that officer and that therapist handle about 500 a year. Councilwoman Stone talked a little bit about the weekends. So, if you go to the other side of the week, I'd imagine that's at least 500 or probably more. So, if you're, if we're just narrowing down mental health-specific calls, we're probably somewhere between 1,000 and 1,500 per year. You have to remember, that's not going to capture a call that may come out for domestic violence or some other type of call. And when we get there, we find out behavioral health, or somebody's having a crisis, and it didn't come in that way. That's how we stat it. It's probably somewhere between 1,000 and 1,500.
So, because it's those type of calls where you don't know it's asked for at the beginning, where you find out when you get there, it's probably double what you're recording?
It could be. That's going to be a hard number to actually
Understand.
Find, but that's probably correct.
Okay. And what hours are the officers that you have that specialize in the CBAT team? What hours are they available?
So, we run four days a week, Tuesday through Friday, and it's just a slightly modified kind of a swing schedule. So, later in the morning is when they start a little bit into the evening. Our behavioral therapist and the county, they haven't met and conferred with the therapist to get them to work all night or on the weekends, and that's out of our control. So, we can only work during the week with our therapist. What we do is about every three to six months, our analysts will look at the calls and determine what is the most effective time for the CBAT officer to be working.
I see. So, maybe we could post those hours on the website so people could have their mental health crises while we have somebody available to treat them. I appreciate that.
No problem.
Thank you. And is Mr. Ambrose here? There he is. Good evening, sir.
Good evening.
You currently deal with the homeless
Correct.
situations within the city. Are you part of the homeless ad hoc committee?
Yes, I am, sir.
How often does that meet a year?
We've only actually met one time, so that's it.
One time this last year or period?
One time.
One time?
Correct.
Okay. What component of homelessness involves mental health?
It varies, literally by the week. It's, I would say it's a regular part of street outreach.
What would your impression be of having the Mental Health Committee that we're discussing tonight be a part of the homeless committee?
It basically comes down to a priority of work. As you know, I manage the Parks and Recreation Department, the library, as well as homeless services. So, it's the priority of what we'll be working on. It's a regular part of what we do, so I don't know how much time would need to be invested. I assume it would be a portion that we could discuss with the city manager.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thanks.
Any other questions? Or we could always come back to you as well, Councilman Holiday?
The only last question I have is, who provides our current resources? And I don't know who to answer that question.
For CBAT? I think that would be...
Not for CBAT, for, for mental health in general. Is that a city responsibility? Is it county responsibility? Is it state responsibility? Who knows that?
Kim?
Councilmember Lavelle?
Well, I can certainly answer some of that. It is the private sector. You know, the hospitals have been kind of tasked with that for now. There's also individual counselors and therapists, such as Ashley had mentioned in the area that... And then there's also county responsibility, which is kind of what Councilwoman Stone addressed a little bit, is that they're addressing the issue, just not with the proximity being close to home for us.
Okay, thank you.
Could I have you piggyback on that as well, city manager?
We refer people to the county mostly and use their services, so.
Are you questions, Stone? Okay, thank you so much, Ms. Stone.
Thank you. Councilman Holiday, last year, the city allocated, I think, close to $400,000 for beds to a nonprofit. Because when you call the county, it, when you're out there in the field with a homeless person, and many, many times, they have schizophrenia, drugs, alcohol, and in order to get a homeless person off the street, poor Brian is out there developing relationships with these homeless people because they're afraid of everyone. And God bless him, the minute he has a yes that they're going to take that homeless person off the street, and you call the county for a bed, there are no beds available. They don't return his phone call. So, while public health is the county's responsibility, we allocated close to $400,000 to a nonprofit. So, when he does get the homeless person off the streets, we can get them to a bed and with resources and services and treatment as well. So, we have to close these gaps. So, I just wanted to just give you a little education on homeless. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, and Councilwoman Warren. We're doing questions, not discussion.
No. Okay. I have a question for the committee. Is the objective of the committee to build a hospital? I'm just asking, okay? No, okay, I'm asking, okay? Is it to build and staff a hospital?
No.
Is it to get information out to our residents so they know where they can turn in case of a crisis?
Yes.
Yes.
And would that be on our website? Would that be in literature? Do you know how you would want to do that?
Well, the formation of the committee will discuss all of this. We want to get all the partners together. We don't want to just say, we're going to do A, B, C, and D, and then when we get the ad hoc committee together, and the professionals are like, no, that's not the avenue approach that you should take. The whole point of this is bringing all the partners together to discuss what is the best solution. Listen, there is, we are not going to end this crisis. I'm going to tell you that right now. It will never end. But if we have a plan of action for resources and services by bringing all the partners, government cannot do it all. We need a public-private partnership. And if we can be a voice to assist that, that is the whole purpose of this committee.
Would you agree that this is larger than Marietta?
Absolutely.
It's globally, it's nationally. Councilwoman Warren, can I just? Can I finish my question?
Go ahead.
Okay. Who would you want sitting on this committee? This is, I'm just trying to figure out, who are the people that you would want on the committee?
Can I interject?
Yes, sir.
So, a recommendation I would put forward is, just like Overland Park did, there was a couple of key stakeholders, such as counselors, county supervisors of mental health, a couple council members of the city that's representing, would be my recommendation, I guess, stakeholders that could have those discussions and work with the partners, and Councilwoman Stone had mentioned, on best actionable steps to take.
Would you agree that it might be advantageous to also have a representative from each of our local hospitals?
Absolutely.
So, in a...
Well, we have two local hospitals.
But I mean, each of them would be involved in this committee. Would that also be a benefit to this committee?
I agree.
Right now, I have no more of the questions.
I'm sorry, I said...
I'd like to address that also, Councilwoman Warren. The mayor of Canyon Lake has reached out to me. He would definitely love for this to even be a regional discussion, along with Lisa Sobek from the city of Menifee, and along with Ashley DiFilippio from this...
Good job.
Yeah, good job. That's kind of like David C. She would also like to be part of this as well. So...
I agree, regionally would be very, very good. I agree.
Our neighboring cities have reached out.
And I want to clarify, I said we had two hospitals. I meant in the city, we have two hospitals.
Right, but I meant, I'm talking regionally, so we have several locally
Five.
Five that we could be involved in this, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. That concludes my questions at this time.
All right, thank you, Councilwoman Warren. Okay, I have a few questions. So, Overland Park, Kansas, do you know the size of that city?
Right at 200,000, I believe, if I remember correctly.
All right, which is double the size of Marietta, all right. And who currently pays for our CBAT team? Is that a county-funded program as well as city-funded program?
I will tell you that the therapist is funded from the county, that for sure, but as far as the CBAT itself?
Yeah, so we have a CBAT officer assigned full-time, paid for by the city, and the therapist is brought to us from the county, and there's 15 teams countywide. The county pays for the therapist.
All right. And has there been any discussions? I'll just ask you, has there been any discussions to increase that number of CBAT teams in our region so we don't have the weekend issue as well as the nights or whatever we're not getting the overlap from?
There have been discussions at our COPs meetings. You know, the county, 2.5 million to 3 million people, we need more than 15 teams. But it's a meet and confer. The county would have to take the lead on that, meet and confer with those employees to get them to work on the weekends and perhaps pay them night differential or whatever that might be, so.
All right. Councilwoman Warren, if you'd like to ask a question, feel free.
Thank you. I just want to ask, instead of, hasn't it been ever brought up to the county, instead of having what we already have change their hours, hire new, more, so there are more groups, more teams, instead of just 15?
It's, if there's 15 teams right now, I'm totally, I'm going to say we probably have 12 staffed. I talked to the Indio chief not too long ago. He didn't have his CBAT therapist at the time. I don't have my CBAT therapist at the time. She went to the private industry, currently interviewing to get that person replaced. But they are very difficult to find, and pay and benefits come into play here. So, if you're going to work on the weekends and you're away from your family and you're working nights, there's going to be pay and benefits and compensation that comes into play. So, your question is, have we talked to the county? I have not personally talked to the county. Have any of the other chiefs, the sheriff, possibly spoken to the county? I'm sure that has come up. I'll be honest with you, they are hard to find. So, if we have 12 or 13 staffed right now, to say, okay, let's go find 30, that's going to be difficult.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question both for Mayor Protem and Councilman Lavelle. Couldn't we move this committee in a more effective direction by talking about this at goal-setting and actually getting a focus group together and actually seeing what, where we would take this? Because we could spend more time than we can tonight, or we may be spending a lot of time tonight. You want to answer that, either one of you?
I again would probably just reference what Overland Park did, and take their kind of learning lessons from what they created out of a council meeting.
And what was Overland Park's budget?
They did not, I've not seen anything published on that yet because I think it's fairly new. So, they assigned it to the committee. I would guess minimum.
So, anything that has to do with public money being put to a different direction other than what our constituents are asking for is my concern. So, I get emails on parks, I get emails on, you know, quality of life, police, fire, et cetera, right? I get emails on code enforcement. But I personally have never got an email on mental health, you know, somebody reaching out to me. And I, obviously, maybe Mayor Protem has, or you?
Well, I would say that's, for someone to reach out to a council member for a delicate issue would be rare, I would assume, rather than like a sidewalk or, you know, a street problem. Reaching out to a professional for mental health services would be more appropriate for like seeking therapy or something. But a directive of going to a council member, I don't think is common thought.
Okay. Another question for both of you is, you know, we do have, I know we're in a healthcare crisis, right? We're in a mental health, we're in a, we don't have enough oncologists, we don't have enough cardiologists. This is a regional issue. You know, I mean, I've been to several events with Loma Linda as well, and it's a huge issue. So, for us to just caveat or carve out mental health specifically, when we talk about recruiting and we talk about all these things, I think that it's a healthcare crisis, and I know that you would have to agree with me 100% when it comes to, we are in a healthcare shortage. We don't even have enough primary care doctors to take care of these people. How long's the waiting list to get into a primary care? I know that it was mentioned that it's three to six months to get in with mental health, but I know patients myself that are waiting that long to get into primary care.
So, the hospital, I'll use the hospital for example, we have a lot of different specialties for physicians and surgeons that take call and help take care of the community. We don't even have one psychiatrist. Healthcare and recruitment is bad. Mental health, especially psychiatry, is the worst.
But is that the city of Marietta's problem? Is that the city of Marietta? Is the city of Marietta supposed to recruit for our local hospitals?
No, we're not supposed to recruit, but it is our responsibility to provide resources to our residents.
And in the Overland Park example, there, none of that was for them to actually recruit.
Do we provide healthcare for our residents?
No.
So, we're now going to provide mental health care?
No, we're not providing
No, no, no.
Mental health care. We're getting, we're getting all the partners together. As stated, we have an issue with the county not even understanding what the needs are here in southwest Riverside County. Doctor, Mr. Brenneman thought we were a full-service mental health care facility, and therefore, why do we need to do this? I was shocked by that comment. AMR, AMR, if you have elevated blood pressure, they're inundating our emergency rooms. Why can't we work with the county and all the therapists, the Unified School District, and come up with a solution of resources and marketing? And hopefully, maybe with Scott, with the economic development, and Patrick, that we could do a campaign to bring physicians within the mental health care industry to our community. We are not building hospitals, we are not a healthcare agency. We are bringing all the partners together to communicate and finally close the gap. That's all it is, Lisa.
Well, it took Explore Marietta to do tourism, right? And they took a dollar from, you know, they're taking, well, they're taking 1% tax so they could put that money together. I'm just wanting to know, I think that, you know, this is just back to discussion and not a question, but it's vast, it's overreaching, it's blurring the line, it's so, yes, I'm not going to say mental health isn't an issue, but I'm just saying, funding for this, staff time, I mean, to put together what they put together in Kansas was quite overreaching, just from what you showed. So, I'm just worried that constituents' dollars are going to be spent, a lot of constituents' dollars are going to be spent on something that we don't have specific parameters for, we don't have a specific goal for. Yes, you want to copy Kansas, but I don't know how much Kansas costs. And that, to me, I want to do my due diligence. I'm not saying this isn't an idea that is so worthy of thought and communication because...
I have a question for you. We have a homeless task force. Brian, can you come up to the podium, please? Thank you. How many chronic homeless people live in Marietta right now?
Chronic homeless, I'd say on any given night, somewhere between 20 and 30. And they're transient, so they do move
Correct.
Through different cities.
Thank you so much. So, we have a task force that deals with homeless issues.
That's met once.
No, 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 no. He's out there daily.
But that's his job. You're asking for a committee that's met once. But that's his job, you're asking for a committee that's met once.
For 30 people. All we're doing is putting a committee together to have a conversation, that is all we are doing. Whatever resources collectively we come together with, we can put it on our website.
Would you be opposed to having a regional committee, much like pulling from different regions?
We just, we just said that three, three other cities are very, very interested.
Just sit at the table with the county? Because we're going to have to get our money somewhere.
So, can I?
What do we need money for? Tell me, you tell me what we need money for.
We need money for outreach, we need money for.
No, we don't, you don't need, we don't need, we don't need money for outreach, we hadn't even gotten to that point, and we want the county to be able to do the outreach.
We need money for another CBAT. If we want to put another CBAT in, we need the county to pay for another CBAT, right?
If, may I interject, Mayor, I'm sorry.
Yes, please.
So, I just want to reiterate that this was an advisory committee with no services attached to it. This is an informational website, which, it was a single landing page for this, that was called out a few volunteer positions from the community, a couple council members, and it was only to provide direction for current council, or what may be a regional committee for, for the southwest region.
But when I read the, the website, it said they meet once a month.
The Overland Park.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, it's okay that we meet once a month. An ad hoc committee is a temporary committee, we meet once a month to make sure all the partners are at the table discussing what services they offer, what services they do not offer, how can we fill the gap? I mean, I, I, I don't know what anymore we can communicate after August meeting and tonight. There is no cost to this, to the residents, and regardless, just say, it's minimal. If it's minimal, with a national crisis, we just had a young lady jump off of Los Alamos Bridge. We just had a student commit suicide. We just had a parent, two weeks ago, commit suicide. There is definitely a lack of communication with regards to resources in the southwest region, and as a medical professional, I just cannot believe you just don't see this.
I, I understand that it, the problem is vast, and, and I'm just not seeing the specific piece of what you're asking for.
So, I'll tell you what, why don't we vote on it?
Let's, let's go to.
And, and remember, the committee is the one that's going to be doing their due diligence in coming back to report to council the lack of services, the lack of resources.
Which we know that, we know that, we do know that.
And let's communicate. I mean, here, Mr. Brenneman didn't even know, again, he thought, well, I don't know why you're doing this when you have full services in Marietta, he doesn't even know.
So are you asking for this committee to be put with homeless?
Yes, yes. Having Brian Ambrose, who I think, you know.
Well, yeah, absolutely, with the caveat, if I may interject, not to actually rename it as well, to include, so the nomenclature is appropriate for not just the homeless, is what I would recommend.
Madam, Madam Mayor?
Um, can I, I have Cindy, um, Councilwoman Warren, I'm going to call on you, I'll call on you next.
Okay, I just have a question. You've called it a ad hoc committee, it, up here it says a standing subcommittee, which is it that we're doing?
Let me clarify.
That's what I'm asking for.
Let me clarify, this will, my recommendation would be for it to be a standing committee, because it will meet regularly, and it will have no end date.
And it would be under the ho- homeless program, it would be conjunction at the beginning with that program, is that what you're asking for?
I believe they should be held in the same manner and fashion, yes.
In, in, on the same committee, because we already have staff assigned to that, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, that's, that's the only question I've been trying to get answered, thank you very much.
You're good.
Perfect.
So to clarify that one more time, that would be a standing subcommittee, that would be renamed with the homeless committee. It would also include the mental health piece.
Correct.
Okay, all right, so, thank you, um, we're going to move on. Do I, do I have any, um, um, do we have? Yeah, do we have any public comments?
I'm lost.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Anne Unmat.
Anne.
Hi, good evening. Um, I want to kind of, I know it's, it's an intense subject, it is, and obviously, you know, I deal with the homeless issue, and obviously, tons of mental health. Separate from that, um, as a Marietta resident, a couple years ago, the lady two doors down, walked outside, started smashing everything in the driveway, setting a fire, had a total mental health breakdown. That consequently did lead to her being homeless, and you see the cycle of frustration to get people the help needed. I'm going to disclose some things that are going to be shocking to you, because I'm very blessed to have great connections, the county, one of the retired, um, directors of the county health department, uh, was one of my volunteers. What he confided in me is an acknowledgement of how broken the system is and how limited, because I've been more effective to help people volunteering for you than I was running Riverside County Mental Health. That's one thing. I also met with the director of Temecula Mental Health, where that's the closest mental health facility that our residents would go to for help. One psychiatrist for over 800 people, and she even said it takes months sometimes to get to see a psychiatrist there. Um, no one's debating it's broken. I was at a couple of these meetings where we did have the county rep there, and just having conversation, the cloud of you being a city, talking to the county, they're sitting up paying attention. And how misinformed the county is, I have called, um, county supervisors' offices and said, I'm going to tell you something. I deal with law enforcement for 15 years, God bless them, how do you quantify what this is really costing the city by not investing, not money, but the conversation was priceless, because I saw the dynamic, the county paying attention. I made one recommendation, which I saw him write down, and I saw his eyes get big, I said, why are we not talking about the elephant in the room, that our jails are our mental health facilities? Why are you not, as a county, putting tons of resources with in-care and out-after-care to follow up, to prohibit the revolving door? Um, law enforcement, I said, I go, I deal with, and it's a joke, but not really. Multiple police officers and ETS is, you know, downtown Riverside, when we do a 5150, and we take someone down there, they make it back to town before we get here. Now, that was meant as a joke, but it's kind of true. Yep, yeah. So, um, the really cool thing I saw is just, um, and I, and I'm so respectful of the, the fact that you're conscious of constituents' dollars, but this crisis, I'm, I'm in homelessness, and I'm like, what is going on? It's not just homeless-related, obviously, the drug epidemic is, um, contributing to it, but there's more people experiencing trauma than I've ever seen, and it's just, it's heartbreaking, because the brokenness, so if there's a conversation and you guys have pull to even get the county to do more, or however this ends up looking, I saw, um, change being effective just by the dialogue, and thank you, you guys, and by the way.
Thank you so much.
You're rock stars. What you did with homelessness, I brag about you guys, I'm proud to live in Marietta, so I would say just go ahead and, and tackle this issue, it's scary and awful, but you guys are the rock stars.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Patrick Ellis.
Okay, I'm trying to get through all this. Um, the work that we've been doing at the chamber with our Physicians' Attraction Roundtable, our working group, um, has identified this as an absolutely enormous issue. I, one thing that I wanted to bring, the concerns around constituents' dollars being paid for this, um, you're talking about such an absolutely small amount of money, but you're already doing that for other things, such as the Cancer Task Force that's being done on a regional basis right now, so it's no different in that regard. I, I personally think it probably should be a separate ad hoc from homeless, but if it has to be there, it has to be there, okay, but it is entire, entirely, entirely a huge issue. One of the main things that challenges Marietta specifically is that Marietta is predominantly, most of the households that are here are PPO households. That means there's no mental health coverage, or there's minimal mental health coverage. If you look at areas such as Riverside and San Bernardino specifically, that is predominantly IHE, IEHP services. They automatically get services, and they all automatically get to the front of the line. Therefore, our residents don't have access to it. Most people don't understand this, they don't understand the dynamic that that changes. Um, and then, from a personal standpoint, I have two young adults in my household that because of COVID, well, not just because of COVID, but COVID really exacerbated it, and really, it identified a need that we needed in our household. It took us over two years to find any kind of help, and the only reason that I found help is because I'm connected, and I was able to make phone calls that most people are not able to make, and I got help for my kids. But most people in this community can't do that, and that's unethical. This would put a group of individuals who are passionate about this together, it would be minimal input from the city, other than just managing the ad hoc itself. These are people, these are professionals who know what they're doing, who know how to go about doing it, and getting all the information out as effectively as possible. This is something that is desperately, desperately needed for our community, and it becoming a regional thing is a no-brainer. You've already heard that there has been expression in, uh, interest expressed from other communities surrounding us. We've seen the homelessness task force and what it can do on a regional basis. We've seen what past healthcare regional task forces have done. This can be something that is very, very important, and it's got to start somewhere, let's start it here, let's start it now.
Alan Long.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Everything the big man said, I agree with, that's absolutely correct. You know, I came here last time, uh, for a different purpose, but heard this for the first time and decided to, uh, advocate for it, and, uh, I'm here again advocating for it, it's, it's really important. I think, at a minimum, the city can expect, whether you want to or not, you're the community's 4011, you're the first call. Councilmember Holiday asked a great question, who, who provides the service now? I heard three different answers. What do we tell the community when they call? I'm going to give you a little testimony, I, I, I was a crisis intervention counselor when I, I first started in the fire service, and that's a peer-to-peer group going around to the tragic calls, just to be there for firefighter, talking to firefighter, and try to work through these things that your mind is not supposed to see. There was, there was a, a, a pretty tragic call, and afterwards, you know, it's a stigma if you ask for help or wanted to talk to someone at the time, so that's what the firefighters there for, to try to get other firefighters to talk about it. I happen to know, uh, two, fast forward, and I was a captain, and we had a call that was short of a, a horror movie, and involved children, and nobody wanted to talk about it, of course, back at the station, but I knew my two firefighters had children the same age as what we just witnessed. So on my own, I, I took it upon myself to call the counseling team that our, our fire department provides. They come in the station, they call a rig out of service, and I said, "Councilor's in there, if anyone wants to come in and talk, go in and talk, you don't have to." An hour later, the entire crew's in there bawling their eyes out. We had to call, we had to send them home, couldn't, couldn't function as a firefighter. I don't know if you know this or not, but our community can't drive down a street without having a police officer or firefighter on it. The healthcare system hasn't caught up with the demand because of what you have all acknowledged, it's a crisis. These firefighters, uh, still call me to this day to talk things through, and the reason they call me is because exactly what Patrick Ellis said, they can't find help. I, I ask them every time, "Have you found a counselor?" And I went through five pages, guess what every one of them says? No new patients, not accepting new patients. The demand is there, but the services are not. So I ask you the question, and, and bottom line, we, we do, we do take an impact, a financial impact in one way or another, because it's called wall time, because 911 is the catch-all. They don't know where to turn, they dial 911, whether it's in jail for, for a meal in a warm room, or in an ER for a meal in a warm room, and, and maybe a cut, but really, the issue is mental health. I think the group needs to be exploratory, just like we did with the Cancer Task Force, and we're, we're getting the resources. By no means did the Cancer Task Force ever intend to provide cancer treatment. They just wanted to provide the resources and the ability to be the 411, because that's what you are, to get the right patient to the right treatment and the right amount of care. That's all it is.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Julie Paul.
Good evening. Um, I'm hesitant to share my story publicly, but I will. My father, as a senior veteran, um, had a suicide attempt towards the end of his life, and I couldn't find him service, and my husband's an elected official in this community. My job is to know how lo- local government works, and there was no, there was no services for him as a Medicare patient. I personally needed help this year, and if it wasn't for Ashley Ingram, knowing somebody, I'm very scared to think of where I would be today. And I, I know how local government works, I'm insured, I'm educated, I'm functioning by all outward standards, but this is so unbelievably important, just to shine a light on it. I think the model, I know it feels like, for those of you that are hesitant to go forward, it feels like a square peg in a round hole. I would encourage you to embrace that. Let's see where we can get this, this issue, talking about it. Anything of, of consequence on staff or finances is going to come back to the five of you for consideration. So, give it a chance, at least in a pilot way, to see if, if, if it can serve the community. I think the model for this is what Mike Nigar championed in Temecula for special needs children. Certainly, the city of Temecula wasn't the, the lone provider for special needs, but he got everybody to the table to have a discussion. Now we have special needs parks, the rec department has classes and services that are geared towards special needs, um, children, so there are, you can move the football down the field on this, even though it's not your primary role, and I would just encourage you to allow the, the council members that are very passionate about this an opportunity to try. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Kathy Beers.
Good evening. Lori, you know why I'm here. Um, I have a now 22-year-old daughter who, um, probably around six or seven years old, started to battling with mental health issues. I'm going to cry. Um, so many times, we went over to Loma Linda, and she would be 5150, clear into Loma Linda. She stayed there three or four times, she's been different places, and, and this, this is, this topic is the nearest and dearest thing to my heart, because we don't have the help that we need for our children that are coming up now. And like, this is not an issue that I dealt with as a child, but guess what? This is prevalent now, it's huge. I read a lot of papers about people who have foster children and adopted children, and how they are dealing with this issue. You know, Lori knows, because I, I shared with her what I dealt with, with my children, both of them. My one is now 35, and she still deals with issues, and my 22-year-old won't talk to me right now, because I kept telling her she needed to go get help, and, you know, you just know this is going to happen, but mental health is not something that I dealt with in my life. It wasn't until I became a foster parent, until I adopted my children, until I saw it face-to-face, and the police officers from this fine city, the school district from this fine city, tried to assist my husband and I in getting help for our children, but there was not that much there to, to help us with, it wasn't available. This is huge, this would be so beneficial to foster parents out there, to adoptive parents out there, to other parents out there, anybody who needs assistance with their children who have mental health issues. Like I said, I didn't deal with any of this growing up, I didn't deal with it till I adopted and fostered my children. This is huge, and if we did this as a city, we're saying to those parents out there, "Look, we want to help you, we'll come alongside, we'll assist you in this, we'll help you find what you need," because definitely, there is a need out there. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Whitney Moylon.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, councilmembers, fellow constituents. I'm not even here tonight to talk on this subject, I'm here to be an advisor on one of the committees. to talk on the subject. I'm here to be an advisor on one of the committees. Um, but the subject is near and dear to me. I am going to remain neutral on the subject. I was diagnosed with clinical depression when I was in high school. I was given Prozac. I went to therapy. And then into my twenties, I quit taking those medications because I felt that they were messing more with my head than they were anything else. I turned to drugs and alcohol. I was arrested. I went to jail. I have DUIs. Nothing helped me until I went to AA. And I read the Big Book of Alcoholics Anonymous. And on page 57 of the Big Book, it says that the purpose of this book is not to solve your problem, but to help you find a higher power that will solve your problem. Today, I rely on my higher power, and that higher power is God. I feel like what we have a problem within our society is that we have turned our back to God, and we now worship other things like TikTok and social media. I know today that for me and my mental health, I cannot be on social media platforms. So I am not on them. Because when I am on them, they hurt me. I can feel it. At the moment, I get on them, and I start scrolling, I can feel it inside of me. I know it's not beneficial to me. So I had to take personal responsibility and not be on those platforms any longer. I also had to take personal responsibility in the way that I live my life. I no longer drink alcohol. I'm almost seven years sober. And I can tell you, 2020 wreaked havoc on our AA community. Those doors being shut by our governor killed friends of mine. I lost three friends that year to overdoses. And it was because they didn't have those rooms, and they didn't have a community. That is what we need, and that is why I want to serve on the Parks and Rec community, because I know that what is going to save our children today is community. We need to bring people together, get them off their cell phones, and bring them together. And until we do that, medication, therapy, yes, they will help in certain instances, of course, but they're not going to help in every instance. And I think that, yes, this is not something we're going to solve overnight. It is something that's going to take a community. So like I said, I remain neutral. I just wanted to share my own testimony with you guys. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your honesty.
That concludes public comments.
All right, um, moving this on for councilmember, um, discussion, or councilmember comments. Um, I'll start off, um, with my comments. Um, a homeless mental health, uh, subcommittee is what I hear you're asking for. I hear you're asking for, um, um, a committee that works effectively, um, together with other community groups. Um, I, I, I can wrap my head around that with respect to, if you could follow some parameters, what I'm setting out. One of the parameters would be it reports back to the council. Um, the other parameter would be it establishes a working relationship with the county to move county funds, which we are so disproportionate at receiving, towards the city of Marietta. The second thing, or the third thing, um, would definitely be pushing for regional committee. So we're not working in a silo. And to limit the resources and staff time of the city of Marietta, I, I can get around it because I put my parameters on those. If you could live with that, I am for this committee, and I would like to see it go forward, personally. Um, I appreciate your passion on this issue. I realize this is an issue. I'm not against it. What I'm against is, I, I needed a little bit more parameters, and I needed a little bit more structure, especially if I'm going to vote for something that could, could cost city resources extremely, because we know it could completely bleed our, our, our budget. So that's...
If I could just, there, I had put these recommendations here for the parameters, and I think everything you mentioned is on this right here in front of that, if you're okay with that. I think it, it addressed those points you made.
I, I'm okay with that, but I really do believe that we must put in that we limit our resources and staff time, because this could be overwhelming for Brian Ambrose in this piece. So I, I would like to see it limited.
How would you quantify that?
Uh, we could quantify that in hours.
May I, may I interject, please?
Yeah.
Madam Mayor, um, everything that you suggested is a goal. Absolutely. Everything that you've said is what Councilman, um, Lavell and I have talked about. So yes. I would say that the, the amount of time for staff would be what Dominique does for us with regards to the Southwest Elected Commission. It's very, very, very minimal. Um, Domin- is Dominique here? Dominique, can you just come to the, to the podium for just one second? Sorry.
Excuse me.
Can I, can I? Oh, can't do that. I can't do that.
Can I jump in and just answer for her?
I was gonna say, it's, it's minimal.
Well, so this committee, as well as the elected one we added last month, as standing committees, they will require agendas and minutes and postings. Um, so that is different from how it was before in the past with those meetings. So...
And Madam, um, City Manager, if, if we're just doing agendas, minutes, h- how much time per month? And, and, and maybe, let me make a recommendation. Because this is a concern for our mayor, and I'm sure it's a concern for you as well, because this is just, you know, another line of business. Councilwoman Lavell, would you, uh, consider doing this every other month versus every month?
I think starting anywhere is better than not starting, so yes.
Okay.
That would be helpful.
Does that, does that help?
That would be helpful.
Okay. So let's say that we will do this every other month. And yes, I concur with everything that's here.
Perfect.
That concludes my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Stone. Councilmember Holliday, do you have another, a discussion or comment?
Yeah, I have comments. Um, I know, I know, um, I, I see both sides of this. I, I see your concerns, Madam Mayor. Um, and I, and I see, I see the crisis that's, that we're trying to grapple with. And yeah, the city of Marietta is not going to fix this. I understand that. Um, but everything has an opportunity cost. Because when you use a resource, whether it's time, money, or water, or whatever the resource is, use it on one thing, you can't use it on something else. So it's, it's something they teach you in, in finance, that everything has an opportunity cost. Um, so you have to, as Mr. Ambrose said, he's, you know, he's one guy. He's got three separate departments. And, um, you know, when I asked him, you know, "Well, what do you think about this?" He said, "Well, I'm only one guy. I only got so much time." That's the opportunity cost. Um, doesn't mean that I'm against this. I'm just saying, I think that's, uh, was worthwhile for Madam Mayor to bring up and, and to, to discuss. And I'm thankful that, uh, you guys were willing to make some adjustments on that. Um, I definitely would like to see those goals you mentioned implemented, because how many times do you see a committee start, and it just goes on and on, and it's not really doing what we wanted it to do? Not suggesting that this would be the case in this, but I think the number one priority of this committee is to loop in all those regional resources that we've talked about. The hospitals, the doctors, the county, for sure, has to be at this table. If not, somebody from the state.
Yes.
Again, I would, Councilman Holliday, on the one, two, three, fourth, one down, if that's okay with you, I think, I, I called these out because I wanted to make sure the goals were very objective as we move this forward.
I'm getting there.
And just for clarity, these are slightly modified from the Overland Park example, because I thought they were exactly what, uh, Mayor DeForest and Councilman Holliday had just mentioned. I mean, they're, they're very, I, I think they're great goals, I guess, because they're constantly monitored and constantly progressing those thoughts and these, these initiatives.
And I guess the only other thing I would ask for is, um, I know, reporting back to the council is one of your things, could we ask for that status report in six months? Is that reasonable?
Yeah, we'll get it every other month.
That's fine.
During governing board.
Okay.
Yeah. Thank you, Councilwoman Warren.
Let's see. Question one, check. Question two, check. Question three, check. Comment two, check. Everything that everybody has set up here is absolutely correct. This is bigger than Marietta. This is a global crisis. Going to start somewhere. Let's start it here. We have two passionate councilmembers who want us to go forward with this, and I am very happy if it gets put under the homelessness program. I think that's a great place to start as an exploratory program. And with other cities getting involved, what's to say that they can't put some money into this, too? So down the road, this could be a really great thing. And if every other month, with a report back, I'm on board, let's take a vote.
All right, moving that. Um, I call for a motion and a second.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Point. Point of clarity, real quick.
Excuse me, sorry.
Sorry.
Ahead of the clerk.
In, in the motion to establish this committee, I, I would move that we title it as well. And so I figured with the homeless endeavor intertwined with it, um, the Social and Emotional Wellness Commission, because that being a, kind of a, a higher level to, to keep it all under one umbrella. Uh, because you wouldn't want to name it a homeless commission, because it's encompassing not just homeless.
How about homeless slash mental health commission?
Com- committee, not commission.
Right, committee.
Yeah. Did I say commission?
Subcommittee.
Oh, sorry.
Yes.
Um...
You're going further.
If I could just interrupt for a second, you could also come back with it, maybe after you have an initial meeting.
Come up with it.
And, and consider that more, because it's not really on the agenda about
Oh.
touching the homeless one.
I, I think you're missing the point. What Councilman Lavell wants to do is rename the homeless commission to the...
Committee.
To, what was it again, John?
Well, I just, I just came up with, uh, so, the Social and Emotional Wellness Committee.
And basically, the mental, uh, illness, mental behavior, uh, c- committee would fall under that. And I'm not sure...
I'm...
Madam City Manager, are we allowed to, to, to do that here tonight? Because it's not agendized, correct?
Right. So this item, yeah, this item will have to come back to change...
Councilman Lavell, let's just go ahead and approve the, the, the commission, or committee?
Committee.
And then if you, if you choose to change, it, it would have to be agendized and bring it back.
So just for clarity, uh, City Attorney, what am I making a motion to approve in terms of the title?
We can go... We don't need the title tonight. It's the recommendation number one, I believe, is what Councilmember Warren was moving.
Okay.
Yeah.
With that, if, if you guys are...
Madam City, Madam City Attorney?
Mm-hmm.
If I, if I may, counsel. So from what I'm hearing, and I just want to make sure that I'm understanding this motion, whoever the maker of the motion is, which I believe is Warren, is you are including a mental health component to the existing homeless services subcommittee, and direct staff to return with a consolidated name, purpose, and composition. Is that correct?
Yes.
I want to make sure that's correct.
Is that correct?
I'm sorry, we had a sidebar.
It is.
My apologies.
It is.
Okay.
Could you please repeat that?
So my understanding is, the maker of the motion would like to include a mental health component to the existing homeless services subcommittee, and direct staff to return with a consolidated name, purpose, and composition.
That is correct. That was my motion.
All right, and I need a second.
I would like to second that.
And all those in favor, do you want to do a...
We can, we can do, um, voice vote, if that's okay?
Yeah, let's do it.
Yeah. So I have a motion from Warren, and I have a second from Lavell. And I'm going to call for a voice roll call vote. Is that okay? Councilmember Warren?
Yes.
Councilmember Lavell?
Greatly moved. Yes.
Councilmember Holliday?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Stone?
Yes.
Mayor DeForest?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously 5-0 on that portion?
And, um, Madam City Clerk, um, I have a question. Um, I was hoping that we could, um, move our applicants to planning and, uh, do our, move that ahead of us, and we'll put ours at the very end when we do our commission.
Absolutely. I think that's...
Can you make that happen?
Absolutely.
Thank you so very much.
Um, if you'd just give me a moment to transition here.
I apologize to all those who have been waiting. Um, we will get right to you right now.
Madam Mayor, are we ready, or do you need a moment?
No, um, I'm ready. Um, we'll move forward, yes.
Okay. So thank you for that. Um, so this item is, in a way, an extension of appointments, although we haven't done that yet. Um, these appointments are actually for the city commissions and committees, which are held by members of the community. Um, commission appointments are made concurrently with the general municipal election, which was certified last month, as you all know. And the committee's appointments are actually made in June based on resolution. However, due to an unscheduled vacancy, an appointment is necessary. Currently, the city has five commission committees to support the city's overall needs and improvement. The five existing commission and committees are listed there on that slide for you. The City Council Commission Appointment Subcommittee is comprised of Mayor DeForest and Councilmember Warren. The Subcommittee met on January 3rd, 6th, and 10th to interview all interested applicants. After interviewing, it is worth noting that the Subcommittee did make recommendations that they felt would benefit most from their experience and knowledge. So if they applied for Commission A, and the Subcommittee thought they were best for Commission B, they went ahead and made that recommendation. All applications were provided to the entire city council for review in advance of today. And before I move forward, I want to provide the Subcommittee the opportunity to speak on the process.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Um, I would just like to thank the council for allowing us, the Subcommittee, uh, Councilwoman Warren and myself, uh, to interview over 40 candidates for the city commissions. Uh, Councilwoman Warren and I enjoyed interviewing and getting to know more about the great people of Marietta. Each person was given a 30-minute interview. We were grateful to all the applicants who took the time to go through the interview process. We thank you for your dedication and your willingness to serve the city of Marietta. Thank you to the City Clerk's office for staying till 8:00 PM on several occasions to accommodate all of the applicants. Your dedication to the process went well over and above. And I will push it on over to, uh, my co-chair.
Yes, I'd like to say, I have never seen, uh, so many quality, qualified, amazing applicants who wanted to give back to our community because of their big hearts and because of their love for this community. Three full days of interviews, 15, 16 people a day. It was worth every minute to sit and talk to every applicant, and it was an honor to serve. And what a great staff we have, that, that always made sure that our applicants had water, we had water and snacks. But they stayed late, as Mayor DeForest said, to make sure that we got the process done. We did not look at this lightly. We worked really, really hard. And we want to thank you, and I want to thank you for the opportunity, because it was an absolute honor to serve on this committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Warren. All right, so, Madam City Clerk?
So, yeah, there you go. So, it's keeping us on track. Yeah. So, um, this is just a brief overview of the recruitment process. Um, we actually started the process in July of 2022. We did various outreach, which is there, um, for you to, um, refer to. Um, there's a picture of my team at the Marietta Knights. Um, they were trying to solicit applicants. Um, so at the end of the application period, there were actually a total of 31 applicants that were received, and then we received some thereafter with a total of 35. This appointment process will be in two parts. First, the city council will deal with the recommendation to appoint to the Library Advisory Board, Parks and Recreation Commission, Traffic Commission, and the Transactions and Use Tax Citizens Oversight Committee, otherwise known as Measure T. The second part will include the opportunity for the city council to interview, if that is the pleasure of the council, Planning Commission App... Planning Commission applicants, followed by the appointment. Before I review the Subcommittee's recommendations, I want to point out that I offered the opportunity for all interested applicants to attend and provide comments or be available for questions, whether or not they were recommended. Several applicants are here in the first two rows, and I would actually like to extend gratitude and thanks to them for their interest and being here this evening. Um, thank you for sticking it out. A couple applicants, a few actually, applicants did provide regrets due to being out of town, and I've provided those to the City Council. After I go over each commission, I will offer applicants the opportunity for comments not to exceed two minutes. The first one is the Library Advisory Commission. Their purpose is to provide community perspective and support to the library staff on policies and major grant or capital project proposals, in addition to promote services and needs of the public library to the state legislatures, county boards, city council, and community. Staff support is provided by Melvin Rosales, library manager. The following applicants on the screen have been recommended by the Subcommittee for Appointment and final approval by the City Council. At this time, I am asking if there are any applicants for the Library Advisory Board, I apologize, Library Advisory Commission, who wish to speak, please come up to the podium. Seeing none. The next commission is Parks and Recreation Commission. Their purpose is to act in an advisory capacity to the City Council and the Community Services Director in all matters pertaining to the Community Services District through the development and implementation of human services, comprehensive recreation programs, parks and rec facilities, to meet the needs of all residents within the city. Staff support is Leah Colick, Parks and Recreation Community Services Manager. The following applicants have been recommended by the Subcommittee and are there for final approval. At this time, any applicants for Parks and Recreation Commission who wish to speak can come up to the podium now, please.
Hi, my name is Catherine Bearishum. I've been living in the city for almost thirty years. I want to show you something that I received. Yes, this was from January 6th, nineteen ninety-eight to June 30th, oh four. This was from July 1st, two thousand eight to June 30th, two thousand fourteen. Okay, let's see. Um, I have been a resident of this fine city for over twenty-seven years. And from January 6th through the two thousand four, June, I was a Parks and Rec Commissioner. Then again, I picked it back up again on June, on July 1st, two thousand eight to fourteen. I decided to run again, and I did this. Um, I enjoyed my position as Commissioner. I worked with Jim Holston and Leah Colick, and I learned a lot about my city. I learned a lot about the parks. I learned a lot about the senior center and the teen center and watching the skateboard park be put in. Um, I, at the time that I was doing this, I enjoyed it. It became part of who I was. I love this city. I am part of the city. Um, a lot of those years and those months that I did, did this, I learned so much about the city. And I want to do it again, and I wasn't chosen. But, um, I do want to say that, um, at the end of this year, two thousand fourteen, the reason that I didn't come back was because I had a fourteen-year-old daughter who was suffering with mental illness, and I decided that I wanted to wait, but I never, ever did I ever say that I wasn't coming back, and I wanted to come back, but things kept taking, you know, a toll on my life, so I decided that I couldn't do it. But I have the opportunity now. I'm retired, and I would like the opportunity to run for this position. I know it. I've done it before. I can't imagine why I couldn't be chosen. But I want to thank you for this opportunity. Thank you.
Are there any other applicants for the Parks and Recreation Commission that would like to speak? Seeing none. Next, we're going to move on to Traffic Commission. The purpose of the Traffic Commission is to advise the City Council on traffic issues, existing and proposed city policies related to traffic calming and traffic environment and projects and budget priorities for traffic-related capital improvement. Staff support is James Ozo, Senior Civil Engineer. The following applicants have been recommended by the Subcommittee and are there for final approval. At this time, are there any applicants for the Traffic Commission who wish to speak? Seeing none. Different from the previous commissions, this is the Measure T Committees. It's for a partial term. It will expire June 30th, two thousand twenty-three, due to an unscheduled vacancy. The purpose of Measure T is to review revenue and expenditure reports prepared by city staff as they relate to the receipt and use of transactions and use tax revenue. Staff support is Javier Carcamo, Finance Director. The following applicant has been recommended by the Subcommittee for Appointment and Final Approval for the City Council. At this time, if there are any applicants for Measure T who wish to speak, please come up to the podium. Seeing none. That concludes my presentation for this, for recommendation number one. I will ask Mayor DeForest to seek questions from the council, call for public comment from non-applicants, and discussion and a vote. After that, we will move on to Planning Commission.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Um, are there any, uh, council member questions on any of the recommendations? Seeing none. Um, Madam City, oh, um, any discussion? No questions, no discussion. I hear crickets up here. All right, well, uh, do, can I call for a motion and a second now?
Yes, and if we can do voice vote, that would just be easier to move things along.
Okay.
Is there anyone to speak that was not an applicant?
Seeing none. I do not have any other, um, public speaker cards.
Okay.
Is there anybody here who would like public comment? Who's not an applicant? Seeing none, Madam Mayor?
All right, thank you so much. Um, just didn't want to miss anyone. Um, I need to call for a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
I will second.
All right, and we'll do a roll call vote.
Councilmember Warren?
Yes.
Councilmember Lavelle?
Yes.
Councilmember Holiday?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Stone?
Yes.
Mayor DeForest? Motion carries unanimously five zero.
All right. Moving on to appointments for, um,
Planning Commission?
Planning Commission?
Yes. So this is the opportunity for the City Council to interview those recommended by the Subcommittee or simply appoint as recommended. I will review the recommendations, offer all applicants the opportunity for comments not to exceed two minutes. The primary purpose of the Planning Commission is to focus on the physical environment within the city. The Commission conducts public hearings and makes decisions and our recommendations about development on behalf of the City Council. The Planning Commission makes recommendations to the Council on general plan amendments, specific plans, and zone changes. The following recommendations from the Subcommittee. Uh-oh. Got a couple problems, hold on. I hear that. Thank you for that. Who I'm going to assume is Mr. Klein. So Planning Commission, um, the, um, the recommended for interview is listed there. Um, Dennis Bruman, Joe Wojcik, Michael Lapaglia, Thomas Beamish is alternate one, and Austin Long is alternate two. At this time, any applicants for the Planning Commission who wish to speak can come up to the podium. Do I have any members of Planning Commission who would like to speak? Seeing none. That concludes my presentation for recommendation number two. I will ask Mayor DeForest to seek questions from the City Council to include interview of those recommended individuals if needed. Call for public comments from non-applicants and discussion and vote.
All right, I'll take any questions from the council. All right.
I do have a comment.
Okay, comment. You can go for that.
I just want to thank the both of you for doing all that work. That, that was a ton of work to put in for all those candidates, and I appreciate all the, all the effort and due diligence that you did. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Um, hearing crickets up here, um, I think that we could just move this meeting right along, and we'll go ahead and go for a motion.
So moved.
And a second?
I'll second again.
And now a roll call vote.
Councilmember Warren?
Yes.
Councilmember Lavelle?
Yes.
Councilmember Holiday?
Yes.
Council, Mayor Protem Stone?
Yes.
Mayor DeForest?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously five zero.
Fantastic. I'd just like to thank everyone who's here, uh, everyone that interviewed for planning. We're super excited to have you, and, um, thank you so much. You guys are going to be a great team on all the committees, commissions, et cetera, et cetera. So, thank you so much. All right. So City, uh, Madam City Clerk, do we go back to appointments, or you want to keep going forward, and then we'll go back?
Well, we're, it's up to you, Madam Mayor, so I was going to continue the city-affiliated appointments.
Let's do it.
Or would you like to do the, the last item first, next?
Let's do the last item first, and then we'll
Okay, and that will be, um, Chief Malloy?
Good evening, Mayor DeForest, Mayor Protem Stone, and council. I'm here this evening to present Agenda Item thirteen for the tiller truck purchase for Marietta Fire and Rescue. Marietta Fire and Rescue seeks to purchase a one-hundred-foot tractor-drawn aerial tiller truck from Pierce Manufacturing, along with the necessary upfitting. As MFR continues its fleet modernization to meet the changing aspects of our city, the Pierce Manufacturing tiller truck is an optimal choice because of its all-in-one performance that meets several fleet configurations. This versatile vehicle will provide MFR with the fire apparatus capable of utilizing a hundred-foot aerial platform, provider, providing water pumping capabilities when necessary, carrying a full advanced life support medical gear complement, and carrying a full complement of rescue equipment. The tiller truck is also highly maneuverable because of the fifth-wheel formation, which provides crews the ability to back the, of a back driver to steer the rear of the truck independently, offering a unique ability to position the truck closer to buildings and structures at the scene. This vi- this is vital as the city's footprint is growing both vertically and horizontally. As more four-story and higher buildings are developed in Marietta, MFR must purchase equipment that addresses the vertical component of firefighting for these types of structures. If we look at some of the planned growth, this is our residential planned growth, and as many of us know that a lot of our residential coming in the city is going to be four-story apartment complexes and condominium complexes. This is not intended to be the list. It's just, this is taken from the city files and shows how much is coming to our city. And then we move to commercial planned growth, and we also know that we have many multi-story buildings coming, such as the six-story hotel coming across from Loma Linda that's going to be in our future. These are the type of facilities that we need to update our fleet to address. And this is an example of what the equipment we would be purchasing looks like, tractor-drawn aerial, which is also known as a tiller truck. For funding, MFR can process this tiller truck purchase through a government procurement services of the Houston Galveston Area Council, that's HGAC, with South Coast Fire Equipment Pierce Manufacturing. HGAC is a nationwide government procurement service that allows local governments and special districts access to cooperative, competitive procurement processes. The tiller truck alone will cost two million, one hundred and fifteen thousand, four hundred and thirty-three dollars, and the cost of upfitting necessary equipment for the truck would be approximately three hundred thousand dollars, bringing the total cost for this truck to two million, four hundred and fifteen thousand, four hundred and thirty-three. I know, it's a shocking number. As part of the operating budgeted option for fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, and twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, the City Council approved a one hundred, one million, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar fire fleet replacement reserve funded with Measure T tax revenue. Staff request City Council approve the use of Measure T fleet replacement reserve and increase the reserves by an additional six hundred and sixty-five thousand, four hundred and thirty-three dollars using Measure T available fund balance to pay for the tiller truck costs. With the additional funds, the Measure T fire fleet replacement reserves will increase to the full amount of the tiller truck costs to ensure sufficient funds are available in the fiscal year anticipated for the delivery of the new truck. The tiller truck construction will take approximately thirty-two to thirty-six months, so that's three years from the time of order to delivery. South Coast Fire Equipment Pierce Manufacturing will honor the HGAC price through January thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. After January, the price of the tiller truck would increase by ten percent. This is, we had already asked them to extend the quote so we could get through this process. Initially, we were given a thirty-day quote, and we asked for an extension to ninety days so we could get it through the city process. So with that, we're making the following recommendation. Would you like me to read the recommendation?
It's not
No, it's in, it's in front of all of us. It's long.
It's in, it's in big print up here, so, thank you.
And I'm available for any questions.
All right, moving it back up to my council. Um, any questions from the dais?
You want to go first? That truck looks Oh, thank you, thank you, Mayor DeForest. The truck looks amazing. Uh, it's a very exciting piece of equipment for the city to, to get. I didn't see on there where and when will the City Council be allowed to drive that truck?
Yes. We have to get our firefighters trained to drive it first, and then get some train the trainers.
I'm totally kidding. Uh, no.
You can have the front. I want the back.
Nobody's interested in driving the front. Everyone wants to drive the back, I understand.
Um, no, I just, it's really exciting to see that. This is obviously a huge upgrade for the city. Uh, thanks for doing this, and, uh, we'll see in three years how awesome it is.
Thank you.
All right, any, uh, Councilwoman Holiday?
So by using those Measure T funds that are already in there and adding to it, does that completely deplete our reserves for equipment?
Well, it's a, as I understand it through finance, it's a funded reserve, so that, that reserve fund is to fund future equipment purchases. So I think the answer is yes, with what's funded right now.
And then I saw on your slide presentation that we have thirty-two to thirty-six months to build that fund back up, but if you had a piece of equipment break in the next few months, it would have to come out of that fund and get replenished before the delivery of the truck.
The way the budget will work is we have that thirty-two to thirty-six months to actually add in that six hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars to bring that one point seven five up to the two point four that we will need to do it, so that'll occur over the, these three years.
But we need more in addition to that.
In, in addition, there will be other budget requests in the future to fund other apparatus. But right now, our, you know, equipment is managed through repair and reset the costs that would be to repair the equipment. So if we have any failings in our equipment, we do have budgeted amounts to repair, just not to buy new.
Understood, thank you.
As we saw through the cost here, the cost of fire apparatus is going up exponentially.
Any other questions from the dais? I'd just like to say thank you for your presentation, and, um, it brings the city up to a whole different level, so thank you so very much. Literally, right? Oh, figuratively as well. Um, so sorry for All right, any other, uh, comments from the dais? All right, um, then I need a motion and a second, and we'll do that
So moved.
After, after public comments.
Oh, after pub- okay, public comments. Any public comments?
There, there are no public comments. I just would like to remind you to please ask for them.
Sorry, I was just getting excited. I was ready to vote for that. I, the first one that votes gets to drive the back, right? No. Oh, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so I have a motion.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All right, and now you got that? Madam City Clerk? Councilwoman Stone and Councilwoman Oh, it's back to this. Oh, are we, are we voting that way? And we'll, I'll stay off.
Yeah, I'll, I, I won't jump on it.
All right.
All right. Fantastic. Everyone place their votes?
There we go. Motion carries unanimously five zero.
Fantastic. All right.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief. Notifications, notice? Should I move to that one?
Um, sure.
Okay, a notice of pending approval of final parcel map, PM three seven five four seven. Madam City Clerk?
Yes, thank you. It's displayed there, um, for members of the public and for the City Council that, um, an application was filed by Sage Cosco Marietta that an application was filed by Sage Costco Marietta for tentative parcel map number 37547 to subdivide 6.65 acres into seven parcels for commercial development. Engineering staff has completed a review of the final map for conformance. Final parcel map PM 37547 conforms to the conditions of approval in the tentative parcel map. All dedications and mitigation required in the conditions of approval has been offered and secured. The milers of the original final parcel map are available for review in the Public Works Engineering Department. That concludes the notification.
Thank you so much, Madam City Clerk. Moving on back to appointments.
Yes, ma'am.
Everyone following us back? We're moving to appointments of city commissions and committees.
Okay, so to continue this item, so we've already dealt with the mental health subcommittee, and now we're going to move on to appointments. But before I do that, I just have up there for you on the slide, these are subcommittees that were dissolved since last year. The City Attorney Selection Subcommittee, it automatically was to sunset upon final recommendation to the city council, and that was complete, so it was dissolved May 3rd. The Water and Sewer Infrastructure Subcommittee, that automatically sunsets upon completion of a final completion of the municipal services review, and that was done September 10th, so that was dissolved as well. And then, of course, as the city council, hopefully remembers, most recently December 20th, the city council acknowledged the Southwest Riverside County Women's Elected Leaders Collaborative as a joint governmental group and directed the city clerk to bring back for appointments under city affiliated appointments, which it will be here this evening. So are there any questions on these three committees before we move on? Okay. We're now going to move on to the second recommendation, which is discuss and appoint delegates and alternates to the city council's subcommittees. I'm going to be displaying a worksheet, which I've also hopefully given to the council, if you would like to look at it that way. Kimberly's going to bring up the worksheet right now and we're just going to do it interactively. And so as it comes up, we're going to go one by one, okay? So really, I'm just going to ask if there's any interest as we move on and each, and as we go, and then you can all evaluate it once it's complete. So the first one is commission appointments. So that's the subcommittee that currently, that DeForest and Warren did for this past commission assignments. So last, the 2022 members were Ingram and Warren, and the next interviews for the Transaction and Use Tax Citizens Oversight Committee will occur in April or May for June appointments. I am requesting that this get transitioned from a standing committee to ad hoc as that's most appropriate. That was my error. And is there any interest for this committee?
It was my understanding that the mayor needed to sit on this committee, is that true?
No, that is not. Membership shall be on a yearly rotation, which is determined by the city clerk based off of interest, membership, and random draw. Mayor Ingram happened to be on it last year, and so because we needed to do interviews, I appointed you.
Right.
To sit with me.
Yes.
It's not because the mayor was required, it just made sense.
Okay, thank you so much for clarifying that.
You're welcome. So is there any, do I have any interest for this commission for 2023?
I'd be interested.
Okay, so we have, thank you, Councilmember Holliday. Any other interest?
Can I serve again?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, so I have interest from Holliday and Warren. Is there any other interest before we move on?
Let's move on.
Seeing none, very good. Homeless Services? So this is the current committee as it is right now. We'll still appoint, I think that's important. And then when we come back for the consolidated, it will be just a refresher and an update to that, okay? So is there any interest on the Homeless Services Subcommittee?
Madam City Clerk, I will continue. Thank you.
Is there any other interest?
Is this the one, this will be the new, okay. I am also interested, thank you.
Councilmember Lavelle? Is there any other interest?
Seeing none.
Okay. So we're going to move on to the Legislative Work Group. The purpose is there for you. I did highlight that membership shall be comprised of the mayor, so that is a requirement, and quarterly rotation of remaining council members, which will be determined by the city clerk. So essentially, all of you will serve on this. The question is, who's interested for quarter one?
I'll do quarter one.
That's Stone?
Yes.
Okay, all right, so it's going to be Mayor DeForest and Mayor Protem Stone for quarter one, is that correct?
That's correct.
Anybody else want, isn't interested in quarter one? Okay, after that, I will just do a random draw and I'll notify each council member, okay?
Fantastic, thank you.
Okay, we're going to move on to Town Square Park Amphitheater. It was previously held by former Councilmember White and Councilmember Warren. Is there any interest in this Subcommittee?
I'd like to continue, please.
I would join her.
I'd be interested as well.
All right, so we have three interested for the Town Square Park Amphitheater. So if that's okay with you, Madam Mayor, after we do the remaining, it might be a good idea to come back to that one to see how many each person is signed up, so they're not overwhelmed or underwhelmed.
Perfect.
Okay. So we're going to move on to, we're going to move past the Mental Health Advisory Subcommittee, and now we're going to move on to city affiliated organizations. So we have Animal Control Joint Powers Authority.
I like that one.
Okay, so it was Ingram and Stone, and so now I'm hearing that Lavelle is interested?
Yeah.
And any other interest? So zero alternate, is that what? Is that what's happening here, Mayor DeForest?
That's kind of what's happening. I'll go on as an alternate if I need to.
Okay. Okay, and we're going to move on to City Selection Committee, that's the LAFCO. This is as needed just during the selection process. Prior delegates was Ingram and White.
I would like to do this committee because it hasn't met in a while, but if we need to do something, I was privy to LAFCO's activities.
Okay, and this is for the City Selection Committee. And if you would like that, that's fine. Is there any other interest?
I'll be the alternate.
Okay, so that's Mr. Holliday, thank you very much. Okay, moving on to the League of California Cities. This is the delegate and the alternate for their annual conference. So I'd like to do it proactively when the time comes, so are there any, is there any interest?
When is that conference?
Madam?
Late September.
September?
I'll do it, Madam City Clerk.
Okay, so we have Councilmember Stone.
How many do you need for that?
We just need one delegate, but we also need an alternate if something occurs and the delegate can't attend.
Thank you.
I'll do that.
Okay, so Warren is the alternate. And that's the alternate, and Holliday is the alternate. Okay. Regional Conservation Authority, the RCA?
Yes, Madam City Clerk, I'd like to be the delegate on that.
Okay, Stone would like to be the delegate.
I can be the alternate.
And Lavelle, alternate. Any other interest in that one?
I'd be interested in the alternate.
Okay. So we can come back to that one, is that all right, Madam Mayor?
That's perfect.
Okay, so now we have RCTC.
Madam Clerk, I'd like to be the delegate, please.
Okay. Any interest for the alternate? Going once, going twice, any alternate?
We'll come back to that one.
Okay. Okay, we're going to move on to the RCHCA.
I would, I'm chairman this year, so I guess I should be there.
Okay, DeForest is the delegate. Is there interest for an alternate?
I'll be the alternate.
Stone? Any other interest? Okay, moving on to RTA. So we have, any interest in the RTA?
I'll do it if there's no other interest and pull off the other one.
Pull off which one?
The Legislative LAFCO.
Oh, okay.
And I could be her alternate. I was an alternate before.
On RTA? So it will be DeForest as the delegate and Warren as the alternate? Is that correct?
Yep, that's correct.
Is there any other interest? Okay. SCAG, the Southern California Association of Governments?
I like that one. I'll delegate or be the delegate on that one.
Okay, so Lavelle would be the delegate. Any alternates?
I'll be the alternate.
I'm sorry, who was that? Councilmember?
Sorry, yes, ma'am.
That's okay. Sometimes you guys sound familiar. Okay, now we're going to move on to Southwest Riverside County Women's Elected Leaders Collaborative.
I think Councilmember Lavelle...
I like that one.
I'll be the delegate and I'll be the alternate.
So I have Stone as the delegate and DeForest as the alternate? Is there any other interest on that one? Okay.
Doesn't two members attend that anyway?
Okay, so the student of the month, the mayor, is the primary representative, so that's required. And then there is just a monthly rotation, and that is done pretty informally. So if you're all okay with that, we'll move on.
Yes.
To the Western Riverside Council of Governments, the WR Cog.
I'd be interested in that.
That would be Holliday.
I'll be the alternate on that one.
So Holliday is a delegate, Stone is the alternate?
Yes.
Okay. So can we go back and revisit?
Yeah.
Yeah?
Let's go back.
Okay. Let's see. So the, let's go back, can we go back to the City Selection Committee, the LAFCO, because you had withdrawn your name, Mayor DeForest?
Yes.
So I have Mr. Holliday has interest. So is there anybody else that could assist with this committee? Or commission?
And I can be the delegate.
Okay, so Holliday will be the delegate. Do I have an alternate? Seeing none? Okay.
Since you're going to go every time, Ron, I'll be your alternate.
On the record.
On the record.
That works.
Okay, so we have Holliday as a delegate, DeForest as the alternate.
Yes.
And then...
Can we revisit Town Square Park Amphitheater? I'll pull my name off of that.
Of course.
I'll do that.
There's already Holliday and Warren.
Oh, sorry.
So that I have Warren and DeForest?
No, 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 you're good. You're good. Yeah, of course, yeah.
So is it Warren and Holliday?
Warren and Holliday, yes.
All right. Oh, yeah, thank you for taking me back to that one.
Yes.
Let's see. And...
And we have number nine, the RCA.
Yes, the RCA. I have Stone was the delegate and Lavelle and Holliday with interest as well.
You can pull me off that.
Okay. So it's Stone is the delegate and Holliday is the alternate, is that correct? Yes, okay. And then number 10, Madam Mayor, correct?
Number 10.
RCTC?
Yes, we have, we need an alternate for RCTC.
Yes.
I'll be the alternate.
Holliday. So I have Warren as the delegate and Holliday as the alternate.
I think that was easy and we're done.
Seems that way.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much, Madam City Clerk.
You're welcome. So if everybody agrees with that, can you go to the next?
All right.
Yes, if we can just get a motion in a second on these recommendations.
I make a motion we pass the recommendations for the subcommittees, ad hoc or standing, and other committees.
Second.
Was the second from Mr. Holliday?
Yes.
Holliday.
Okay, can you go to the next slide? And I did want to note that part of this recommendation is for you as a council to reappoint and appoint members of the city council to the library board, not to be confused with the Library Advisory Commission in accordance with our municipal code to coincide with their elected terms, but not to exceed three years. This is procedural. I am asking that the council just add that as part of the recommendation.
So added.
Mr. Holliday, is that?
Second is amended.
Okay, thank you very much. So I'm going to do roll call vote. Councilmember Warren?
Yes.
Councilmember Lavelle?
Yes.
Councilmember Holliday?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Stone?
Yes.
Mayor DeForest?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously, five zero.
All right, thank you so much, Madam City Clerk. Moving on to governing board announcements. Madam City Clerk? I know we're having technical difficulties, so the slides will not be shown tonight, so we apologize for that, but we're having some issues with our computer system. So anybody who would like to do a governing body announcement?
Yes, I would like to do a governing body announcement, even though you can't see my meetings, which will be, I'm assuming, posted on the website for your review.
Yes, ma'am.
But there's one item that I like to comment on, and that was that I attended the funeral of Deputy Isaiah Cordero with our chief of police, Tony Conrad, and our men and women in uniform. Public safety from all over the United States attended to pay their respect to their brother Deputy Cordero. It was actually a very heart-wrenching experience to hear the cries from Deputy Cordero's mother before she even entered the church. Deputy Cordero would be alive today if our justice system did not fail him. Our legislature is passing laws that protect the criminal and not our public safety or their residents or businesses. Our governor is shutting down prisons, and the nail in the coffin, no pun intended, is a Stanford Dignity Judge who did not do her job. We must fight for justice and hold our elected officials accountable. The number one priority of elected official is to keep our community safe. If we can't do that, then we should not be serving at all. To the officer in the back of the room, I have a message for you and your brothers and sisters in uniform. I know that you know this, but this is just a friendly reminder. Marietta is the third safest city in the nation, and we're the second safest city in the state of California. We do have bad people that live in Marietta, and we definitely have bad people that visit our community. Never ever let your guard down. Rest in peace Deputy Cordero. Your brothers and sisters in uniform will take it from here. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councilwoman Stone. Is there any other governing board announcements tonight? Seeing none.
Mayor DeForest, do you were going to announce?
It's on my closing. Thank you, city manager. All right, seeing none.
Seeing none.
Seeing none. Moving on?
The special meeting announcement prior to adjournment.
Before we continue, I would like to take a moment and announce that on January 19th and 20th, we will be having a special city council workshop at the Marietta Hot Springs to go over city goals and department overviews. The agenda has been posted on the city's website. And for adjournment tonight, sadly, tonight's meeting will be adjourned in honor of three individuals who have impacted the lives of not only Marietta residents, but those of a larger Riverside community. Councilmember Warren?
Pardon me. Tonight, it is my honor to talk about former Fire Chief Marvin D. Curran, who was a lifelong Marietta resident, U.S. Army veteran, dedicated public servant, and founding member of the Marietta Fire Department. He was the second fire chief to serve in Marietta's fire 75-year history. He passed away on November 20th and 29th.
He passed away on November 20th in 2022 at the age of 93. His impact in the Marietta community has been indescribable. Marietta mourns the loss, and our condolences go out to his family and loved ones, and may he rest in peace.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Warren. Mayor Protem Stone?
Riverside County Sheriff's Department Deputy Azera Cordero was killed in the line of duty on Thursday, December 29th, 2022. In 2014, Deputy Cordero began his service with the department as a correctional deputy and graduated from the 73rd Corps Academy. We thank Deputy Cordero for his dedication and commitment in protecting our community. Our condolences go out to his family and loved ones. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Stone. Riverside County Sheriff's Department Deputy Darnell Calhoun was killed in the line of duty on Friday, January 13th, 2023. Deputy Calhoun began his service with the Riverside County Sheriff's Department in 2022. After serving with the San Diego Police Department, Deputy Calhoun not only served our county, but his, sorry, but his family owns a local Marietta restaurant, and the outpouring of community support has been astounding. Tomorrow, on January 18th, we will be holding a candlelight vigil at 5:30 PM at Town Square Park Amphitheater. Please join us to show our community's gratitude for Deputy Calhoun's service and support for his loved ones. The meeting is now adjourned.